Recording Secretary, can you please start the meeting?
Chair, the meeting is now being recorded.
I would like to call the regular meeting of August 11th, 2025 to order. For anyone in need of Spanish interpretation services, certified interpreters are available this evening. Please proceed to the lobby for assistance. Para cualquier persona que necesite servicios de interpretación en español, hay interpretes certificados disponibles. Por favor, diríjase a la entrada para recibir asistencia. Will the secretary please call roll?
Commissioners Camilla? Commissioner Leo?
Here.
Commissioner Oliva?
Here.
Commissioner Fam?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Vice Chair Benninger?
Present.
Chair Ramos?
Present.
Chair, quorum has been reached at 5:43 PM.
Thank you. We're now going to have Vice Chair Benninger lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benninger. Before we begin, I would like to remind my fellow commissioners to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when not speaking. And when speaking, please place the microphone about four inches away from you. Thank you. Members of the public may attend the Planning Commission meeting in person or virtually via Zoom. I now invite the Commission Secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in this meeting.
This meeting is being livestreamed via our portal at www.santa-anna-gov.com-public-portal and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofsantaana videos. If you would like to provide public comment, you may do so in the following ways. Join the meeting via Zoom, enter the meeting ID number 89870476760. When the item you wish to comment on is being discussed, please select the hand icon to indicate that you would like to speak. Once called upon, remember to unmute yourself and state your name for the record. You can also join the meeting by calling 669-900-6833. Enter meeting ID 89870476760. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press 9 to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the last three digits of your phone number. After you are called upon, you may press 6 to unmute yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to provide public comment, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the recording secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time is up.
Moving on to public comments on non-agenda or non-public hearing items. Secretary, does anyone wish to speak?
If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak form located in the lobby. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please select the hand icon to let us know you would like to comment. If you are calling in and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please dial 9 and then 6 to unmute yourself. I will wait a few seconds.
Thank you. I'd also like to state for the record that Commissioner Scamilla joined us at 5:45, I believe.
Chair, we do not have any speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve Item A, minutes from July 28th, 2025? Item B, excused absences? And Item C, related Bristol 2025 annual monitoring report for property located at 3600 South Bristol Street?
I'd like to move Item A and B on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu, for the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Secretary, please call for a roll call vote.
Commissioners Camilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo?
Aye.
Commissioner Oliva?
Aye.
Commissioner Fam?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benninger?
Aye.
Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Motion approved by unanimous approval with all commissioners present.
That concludes the consent calendar items. Moving on to the public hearing.
Item, Item C was pulled.
Sorry, did a commissioner pull Item C? It was a part of the consent calendar.
I'm sorry, I'd like to add Item C to my motion. So I reframed the motion being, I'd like to pass the consent count for Item A, B, and C.
Sir, point of order, do we just need a vote on Item C now?
Okay.
Commissioner Wu, would you like to motion to approve Item C?
Item C.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. So we have Commissioner Wu with a motion for Item C and Vice Chair Benninger with a second. Secretary, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioners Camilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo?
Aye.
Commissioner Oliva?
Aye.
Commissioner Fam?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benninger?
Aye.
Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Motion approved by unanimous approval with all commissioners present.
Thank you. That concludes the consent calendar items. Moving on to the public hearing. I will now review the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the commission. The public hearing will be opened. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to the comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will be closed. And then after that, the discussion will return to the commission with formal action taken to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. You may state your name and address, that is voluntary. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral of the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Please note, decisions on these matters are final unless appealed within 10 days by any interested individual or party. Recommendations on these matters will be forwarded to the city council at a later date for final determination. Now moving on to Item 1. This is the time and place for the amendment application AA #2025-01, vesting tentative track map VTTM #2025-06 and development agreement DA #2025-01 for the village-specific plan project generally located at the 1561 West Sunflower Avenue, located within the specific development number 48, SC48 zoning district. Before we begin, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Please state your name before commenting.
Sure, Commissioner Escamilla. I did meet with the applicant's development team at their location down, oh my gosh, at the Secret Service headquarters and trying to get the date on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Escamilla.
I spoke to the applicant on 8/7/25. It was a call asking if I had any questions and also updated me on potential contractors that they were looking at.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo.
And I have a form here.
I previously spoke to the applicant, but I submitted the ex parte form back in May and it wasn't, and haven't spoken to them since.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliva. Do any other commissioners have anything they wish to disclose? Okay, saying none, we're going to move on to the presentation. The case planner, Jerry Givara, will now provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is a public hearing item on the Village Santa Ana specific plan project. The applicant, South Coast Plaza, is seeking approval of an amendment application number 202501 to establish the Santa specific plant, SP6, and to change the zoning district of the project site from specific development number 48 to specific plan number 6. Applicants also requesting approval of vesting tenant track map number 202506 to subdivide the project site into six buildable lots as well as development agreement number 202501 outlining terms and conditions for the project. The project address is 1561 West Sunflower Avenue and it's located within Ward Number 6. Tonight's presentation will include an overview of the project, including project background, community engagement, and project description and analysis of the project, staff recommendation, next steps, and we'll conclude with questions from the commission. Moving on to project discussion. The project site is located at the northeast corner of Sunflower Avenue and Bear Street. It's highlighted in yellow in the aerial view being displayed. Surrounding properties include South Coast Plaza in the city of Santa, in the city, sorry, South Coast Plaza in the city of Costa Mesa to the south, multifamily housing and communities of Versailles on the lake and St. Albans to the north, related Bristol to the east, and the Village Creek community in the city of Costa Mesa to the west. The project is currently, the project site is currently developed with the South Coast Plaza Village commercial center that includes the Regency Theater, Morton's Steakhouse, Corner Bakery, Antonello, and other restaurants and commercial tenants spaces. Now a little bit about the history of the project site as well as the heritage of the applicant. As mentioned, the applicant, South Coast Plaza, also owned by the Secret Service family, owns the project site and has a longstanding presence in Santa Ana and the county since the 1918, 90s. The family was initially known for growing limo beans and raising cattle and then shifted to transforming agricultural fields into commercial centers like the subject site as well as South Coast Plaza. In 1973, the project site was developed with the current development. And as part of this application, the current development will be demolished. In terms of background with regards to the city's general plan, as you may be aware, the Golden City Beyond Santa Ana General Plan was adopted in 2022, which basically sets forth the long-range planning policies that reflects the community's aspirations and values for the city through 2045. The general plan update highlighted five focus areas for future growth, one being the South Bristol focus area in which the site is located in. The South Bristol Street focus area represents Santa Ana's northern gateway, southern gateway, and the vision's opportunity to transform auto-oriented shopping plazas to walkable, bike-friendly, and transit-friendly urban villages that incorporate a mix of high-intensity office and residential living with commercial uses. As shown on the picture, the focus area basically allows for a maximum floor area ratio of five, up to 125 dwelling units per acre, and a maximum building height of 25 stories. Again, this is what the general plan allows for for this project site that was adopted by the city council in 2022. These are images from the general plan to help you visualize the intent and the vision for this focus area. In terms of public engagement and input, the project did have two Sunshine Ordinance meetings in accordance to the city's Sunshine Ordinance. The first community meeting was held on August 23rd of 2023, and the second meeting was held on November 8th, 2023. In addition to the Sunshine Ordinance community meetings, the scoping meeting for the supplemental environmental impact report for the project was held on November 15th, 2023. We also held a work-study session with the commission on June 23rd to receive public input as well as comments from the commission. Over the last two years, staff has followed up on questions from residents, businesses, and other stakeholders with regards to the project and has maintained a project webpage up to date with information regarding the project. For tonight's meeting, notices were sent to property owners as well as occupants within a 2,000-foot radius of the project site. Notices were also published in the Orange County Register as well as onsite and mailed to the representatives of the Sandpoint South Coast Republic Homes, Metro Classic, Morning, Sunwood, Thornton Park, Sunwood Central, and Rosewood Baker Neighborhood Associations 20 days in advance of this meeting. These are some pictures from the two Sunshine Ordinance meetings that were held in 2023 at the West End South Coast Plaza Hotel, and approximately 230 people participated. In addition to the city-required community engagement efforts, the applicant has held over 150 community meetings, including attending and presenting and neighborhood association meetings, small group meetings, as well as answering phone calls, emails, and other correspondence. The applicant also has a dedicated community liaison for this project and maintain a project website as well, and will continue to make themselves available for any public feedback during this process. During the public hearing segment of tonight's meeting, the applicant is also available to answer additional questions about their independent community engagement efforts. Moving on to project description and what the request is. The applicant is requesting, as mentioned, approval of a specific plan, and that is basically to set the framework to allow the construction of up to 1,583 residential units, up to 80,000 square feet of commercial space or retail space, and up to 300,000 square feet of office space. In addition, the project encompasses approximately 13.8 acres of public and private outdoor, outdoor and recreation space, of which 7.5 acres will be made publicly accessible. In addition, the project will include approximately 3,439 parking spaces. This is the proposed ground-level site plan for the project. The project would allow for both horizontal The project would allow for both horizontal and mixed uses across the site as well as mixed-use residential-only and commercial-only buildings. The focal point of this layout is the approximately seven point five acres of publicly accessible open space at the center of the proposed site plan as well as the central commercial area that has been designed to accommodate a variety of commercial uses such as restaurants, markets, and other retail uses with additional commercial uses extending throughout the ground floor of adjacent buildings and really creating that urban village. Building heights will range from one story to twenty-five stories with reduction in height and upper-story setbacks for buildings adjacent to the communities of Versailles on the lake as well as St. Albans. This is a rooftop site plan, which was included to provide a highlight of the approximately six point three acres of private open space. So this is in addition to the publicly accessible open space. The private open space will be provided through outdoor balconies, patios, as well as rooftop decks and indoor spaces. As mentioned, the park, the project will provide a total of three thousand four hundred and thirty-nine parking spaces. The parking would accommodate both residents and visitors of the project. And the parking will be provided through a combination of underground parking, above-grade parking structures, as well as on-street parking. A portion of the parking spaces will also be designed and equipped with electric vehicle charging stations in accordance with the California Building Code. A parking management plan has been prepared for this project, which was included as Appendix E of Exhibit Seven on the staff report. The parking management plan has been prepared to ensure that there is adequate parking for the project as well as to properly manage parking for residents, tenants, employees, as well as guests. The parking management plan identifies how parking spaces will be assigned, how gates will be managed, how access for residents and guests will be provided. Based on the parking management plan as well as the parking analysis that was provided by the applicant, the project has sufficient parking. Nevertheless, a condition of approval requiring the applicant to enforce parking management strategies has been included as part of Exhibit Four. Some of those parking management strategies include valley services. With those parking management strategies being implemented, the project can accommodate up to additional a thousand parking spaces. The parking ratios being proposed for the project is one point four parking spaces per unit with parking management strategies that will be increased to two parking spaces per unit. The applicant's requesting a parking rate of four parking spaces per one thousand for the commercial and retail component as, and a rate of three thousand, or three parking spaces per one thousand for the office space component. All right, this is a site plan of the publicly accessible open space as well as other components of the project to highlight the, the, the open space for the project. The open space has been a critical component of this project, not only to provide recreational opportunities, but also serves as a playmaking, placemaking feature of the project. A promenade has been included along Sunflower Avenue to draw pedestrians from the resident area to the Village Square, which is being denoted as Footnote Number One on the site plan. The Village Square, which is the, the commercial component, central part of the project, has been designed to provide a hub for public gatherings and can be programmed for large-scale events such as farmers' markets or outdoor movie nights. Garden pasels and strolls are also placed throughout the development to allow for passive recreation. A fitness loop is also a critical component of this project, which encircles the, the project site and provides for other recreational opportunities for the residents as well as visitors of the site. Then lastly, as indicated in Footnote Number Ten, the project also includes a dog park along Plaza Drive at the northern end of the project site. All right, now moving on to circulation for the project. This is a site plan of the proposed circulation. The project would include a pedestrian network that would allow residents and workers as well as visitors to circulate from one space of the project site through another space of the project site and will also have connections to the related Bristol project to the east. The project will also include a bicycle network, which will include a Class Four cycle track along Sunflower Avenue and a Class One bike path along Bear Street as well as additional bicycle parking throughout the, the project site. The project will also include new internal private streets, which consist of the North Connector, the Central Connector, as well as Village Drive and the West Connector. In addition to these internal streets, the project also includes additional landscape improvements and new mediums along Sunflower Avenue, Bear Street, as well as Plaza Drive. Two new traffic signals will be installed along Plaza Drive and Bear Street. In addition to address community input during the outreach process, the project will also include a new traffic signal at the intersection of Bear Street and Wakeham Place. In terms of other improvements, the project will also include improvements to private water mains as well as fire hydrants and the sewer network and will also include public improvements to water mains, fire hydrants, as well as public meters. All right, this is a, a northwest rendering view of the project from the corner of Sunflower Avenue and South Plaza Drive, highlighting the Village Square as well as other improvements to Sunflower and Plaza Drive to give you an illustration of what the vision is for this project. The following is a north rendering view of the project from the corner of Sunflower Avenue and South Plaza Drive, again highlighting the Village Square, which is the, the, the commercial component of this project, as well as giving you an illustration of what South Plaza Drive could look like with the implementation of this project. All right, the following is also a northwest rendering view of the project from the corner of Sunflower Avenue, which highlights the multimodal transportation concept of the project as well as displaying the bike lane that will be built as part of this project along Sunflower Avenue. This is a southeast rendering view of the project from the Central Connector Street looking towards South Coast Plaza, again just giving you a different angle of the commercial square of the project. And this is a ground view of the project looking from the inside of the Village Square, just to kind of highlight the, the pedestrian realm as well as the commercial component of the project. And then lastly, this is a view from one of the garden pasels looking from the Central Connector, just to give you a visual representation of what the proposed garden pasels will look like for this project. All right, moving on to the specific planned overview. As mentioned, the applicant is requesting an amendment application to establish a specific plan. The specific plan basically sets the framework for the development of this project. The specific plan is broken up into six chapters. Chapter one is the introduction, which provides an overview of the specific plan, including the project's setting and background, purpose, authority, and relationship to other relevant plans, programs, or regulations such as the general plan as well as the city's master bicycle plan. Chapter two, the vision and guiding principles, describes the vision and guiding principles for the project along with key features of urban design and placemaking elements of the project. Chapter three, the development plan establishes the land use plan, build-out summary, and permitted uses for the project. It also describes the open space and landscape concepts, pedestrian, bike, and vehicle circulation, and infrastructure improvements that I discussed previously. Chapter four, development regulations provides permitted uses and development standards, standards including building forms, setbacks, building orientation, and open space requirements, and also includes maximum density and intensity for development parking standards as well as signage regulations for the project. Chapter five, design guidelines, contains guidelines related to the design of the project site and buildings, and information about architectural materials and landscape inspiration, including a list of recommended trees, plant shrubs, and ground cover. And then lastly, chapter six, administration and implementation, establishes the responsibility enforcement and interpretation of the plan. It also includes the process for the review of project phases and modifications and amendments to the plan. This chapter also covers financing for the project. All right, moving on to project implementation. The specific plan also contains a chapter or a section pertaining to project implementation, which addresses how the project will be implemented through different phases. Individual phases will be submitted for staff-level review with certain thresholds requiring discretionary actions by the planning commission. A truck route and traffic control plan will be required for each phase of the project, and a maintenance plan will be required for the overall project. Construction of the project will be implemented in five phases to account for market conditions as well to ensure access to public facilities and infrastructure connections are appropriately installed to serve the project. These phases may overlap and completion of the project may take up to twenty years. Again, this depends on market factors. Phase one will include construction of three hundred and sixty residential units and seventy, seventy-three thousand square feet of commercial area. Phase two will include five hundred and thirteen residential units. Phase three will include a hundred and seventy-seven residential units. Phase four will include two hundred and sixty-four residential units and three hundred thousand square feet of office and the remaining commercial square footage. And phase five will complete the project with two hundred and sixty-nine residential units. All right, moving on to project analysis. In terms of consistency with the general plan as well as the South Bristol focus area, the project is consistent with the vision of the general plan and the focus area and is consistent with the intensity and density that's envisioned and approved by the general plan. In addition, the project supports several goals and policies of the general plan, which was included as part of the exhibit to the staff report as well. And then lastly, the project is consistent and supports implementation action number two point twelve of the land use element that requires development and adoption of specific plans or corridor plans for the five focus areas. So in terms of comparisons with the general plan, as mentioned, the general plan allows a maximum density of a hundred and twenty-five dwelling units per acre. The project is proposing roughly about ninety-three dwelling units per acre. The floor area ratio as allowed by the general plan is five. The project is coming at approximately three point oh. In terms of building height, the general plan allows for a maximum height of twenty-five stories. As mentioned, the specific plan also allows for a maximum of twenty-five stories as well. In terms of scale and compatibility with surrounding uses and neighborhoods, as mentioned, the project will provide a mixed-use village that is integrated and respects the community. The general plan land use destination for the project sites allows development up to twenty-five stories tall. The project will limit heights to twenty-five stories, and buildings adjacent to the northern property line abutting the communities of St. Albans and Versailles on the lake will be limited to eight stories, which is consistent with the general plan. Furthermore, through the city's development review process for each phase and the design guidelines contained in chapter five of the specific plan, new buildings will be reviewed and designed to be compatible with existing surrounding uses as well as to include additional architectural features and upper-story setbacks to reduce the massing of these buildings. This is a massing illustration of the project and the general vicinity, basically to show the relationship with the vicinity. Along the upper side, you have the related Bristol project that was approved by the city council last year to help you visualize the context of the proposed project and in relationship to the Bristol-related specific plan. As you can see, as shown by the massing illustration, all the taller buildings for the project site will be along Sunflower Avenue with reductions of buildings along the communities of St. Albans as well as Versailles on the lake to the north. In terms of the specific plan analysis pursuant to Section forty-one five nine two, that's an Anamnus of a code, approval and establishment of a specific plan requires approval of an ordinance by the city council with recommendation by the planning commission. In terms of the findings needed to make, to grant approval of a specific plan, in addition to the requirements of what a specific plan needs to have, there are four different criterias for that. One being the distribution, location, and extent of uses of land, including open space in the area are covered by the specific plan. The proposed distribution, location, and intensity of major components of public, private transportation, sewage, water drainage, solid waste disposable, energy, and other essential facilities proposed within the covered area by the specific plan and needed to support land uses in the specific plan are required. The third criteria is a specific plan needs to contain standards and criteria by which development will proceed and standards for the conversion, development, and utilization of natural resources were applicable. And the last criteria is that the specific plan contained a program of implementation measures, included regulations, programs, infrastructure projects, and financing measures to the extent feasible need to be contained within a specific plan. The Village Santa Ana specific plan contains all these requirements and is consistent with not only city's requirements for a specific plan but as well as state requirements with regards to what the specific plan needs to contain. In terms of the zone change being requested by the applicant as part of Amendment Application number twenty-two five oh one, as mentioned, the project site is currently zone-specific development number forty-eight, which was established in nineteen eighty-nine. The specific plant, or sorry, the specific development number forty-eight does not currently contain the framework to allow for the project to move forward, which is why the applicant's requesting approval of amendment application to establish a specific plan. That specific plan is also needed to ensure that the zoning is consistent with the general plan. The applicant's also requesting approval of a vesting tenant track map. Subdivisions are governed by Chapter thirty-four of the Anamnus of a code. And pursuant to Sections six-six-four-seven-three-point-five and six-six-four-seven-four of the California Subdivision Map Act, a map needs to have certain requirements, and the governing body needs to make certain findings in order to grant approval of a vesting tenant track map. Again, the applicant is requesting approval of this map to subdivide the project site into six lots. This vesting tenant tract will allow for better financing opportunities for the project site due to differences in phasing as well as funding mechanisms for commercial residential mixed-use service-oriented parking open space components of the project. And staff has determined that the vesting tenant track map for this project is consistent with the state as well as local regulations. In addition, the applicant's requesting a development agreement. Development agreements are contracts negotiated between project components as well as public agencies such as the city to govern land uses that may be allowed in a particular project. In addition to the requested entitlement, as mentioned, the applicant's requesting adoption of a development agreement through an ordinance. To evaluate the applicant's proposed development agreement and identify priorities for the development agreement terms, the city council formed an ad hoc committee in March of 2025 comprised of three council members. During the review process of the development agreement. The council provided feedback as well as any community engagement input that they received from the community. The council members met on a monthly basis and informed the terms of this development agreement. So key terms of the development agreement, the first term being the twenty-year term. For the development agreement as well as a one-year, five-year extension. Each extensions, it will be subject to the construction commencement of no less than fifty thousand square feet of commercial. And construction of three hundred and sixty residential units. Timing for development, no building permits for residential units shall be issued in excess of three hundred and sixty residential units until building permits. Are obtained for at least fifty thousand square feet of commercial space. In terms of community benefits, the request, the applicant is proposing a community payment. Of nine point three million dollars and for payments. Another key component of the development agreement, it's the open space. The applicant is requesting and proposing construction of seven point five acres of public accessible open space. To satisfy the city's provisioned. Which requires a minimum of three acres per one thousand residents. As well as being a requirement in the city's general plan. Per the general plan ratio, the project requires to provide. A total of eleven point four acres of parkland. And the project is proposing seven point five acres, which is shy of three point nine acres. The project still will remain consistent with the general plan in accordance with policy. One point seven and one point ten of the land use element. Projects are allowed to provide a reduction onsite open space providing. Credits of parkland for public use as an incentive towards developers creation of open space. That are accessible to the, to the public. Action number one point ten encouraged collaboration with property owners to provide public access to open space. As well as programmed space. Again, so these two policies acknowledges that the city is park deficient. And is challenging to construct new parkland due to the city's built-out nature. And then one of the last key terms with regards to the development agreement that's being requested. Is a reduction of the inclusion housing fee. Which requires and a payment of five dollars per square feet of habitable square feet. The applicant is requesting a reduction to five dollars instead of the fifteen dollars. Pursuing to section forty-one nineteen oh nineteen, a thousand nine hundred and three A, the applicant. Is requesting a development agreement which allows for deviations in this. Fee requirement. Nonetheless, with the fee reduction, the project is looking at approximately. Contributing seven point one million dollars to the city's inclusion housing. They that will been then utilized for the construction of affordable housing elsewhere in the city. All right, moving on to economic benefits. So as part of the general plan, the city adopted a policy requiring. A community benefit analysis as well as fiscal impact analysis for projects proposing to change the zoning of a property. To ensure that there's sufficient economic and community benefits being proposed by the project. So in terms of this project, the project will provide. The creation of one-time jobs of about eight thousand six hundred and fifty-eight city capture jobs. Which includes both indirect and direct full-time jobs and part-time jobs. Approximately seven hundred million captured in, in labor union. Income as well as one point one billion captured and economic output. In terms of recurring impacts, so these are long-term jobs, the, the project will create an additional one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven jobs. That includes both part-time as well as full-time jobs. Which is a increase of a hundred and eighty-seven jobs from the current output of the project site development. In addition to the jobs being created for this project. The project will also create an additional one thousand five hundred and eighty-three new housing units. Which will result in a zero point zero two decline jobs housing balance. Resulting in a positive shift towards the direction of a one-to-one job housing balance. All right, in terms of fiscal impacts to the city's general fund. The project will result in a net positive of an additional four point nine million dollars of annual. Site revenue. In terms of total expenditures, you're looking at two point six million. Which comes out to a total net annual site fiscal impact to the city of two point three, two point three million. Other community benefits, as mentioned, the project will include an additional one thousand five hundred and eighty-three residential units, which will. Contribute to the city's arena allocation. And then lastly, the project will create an urban village, which will contribute to the local atmosphere by providing. Additional recreational opportunities as well as commercial and other. Benefits that will be available to the general public. All right, so as part of the overall project, because the project is asking for a specific plant. Specific plans are subject to review by John Wayne Airport Land Use Commission. So on June nineteenth of this year, the project was forwarded to the John Wayne Airport Land Use Commission for review. They found the project to be inconsistent with two of their components of their. Airport land use and Ross plan. Because of that, the project does require a ALUG overrule process. So we initiated that with city council on June sixteenth and we provided notices. To intend to overrule the John Wayne's Airport's Land Use Commission's notice of inconsistency for the project. To ALUG as well as the division of economics. We still have not received any comments back from ALUG or the Division of Economics with regards to that. But that will require a two-thirds vote by the city council in order, in order to override their determination. And the staff does not have any concerns with regards to that process. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, the project has prepared a supplemental environmental impact report. The draft supplemental impact report was made available to the public for review from, from April seventeenth to June ninth. The final E I R was released to the general public on August fourth. The project does include mitigation measures and they have been incorporated to address impacts as much as foreseeable. But the project also does include a statement of overriding consideration. That has been prepared that will require certification and approval by city council. In terms of the environmental supplemental environmental impact report findings. The project analysis found less than significant impacts with regards to energy. Greenhouse gas emissions hazardous, hazardous materials. Geology and water quality, land use and planning, population and housing, public services, transportation, utilities and service systems. The project found less than significant impacts with mitigation with regards to air quality. Cultural resources, geology and soils, noise and tribal cultural resources. And concluded significant and unavoidable impacts with regards to recreation. And this is again with regards to the three acres per one thousand requirement. In terms of staff's recommendations, there are five recommendations before you tonight commission. So staff is recommending one, adoption of a resolution certifying the final supplemental environmental impact report. Adoption of environmental findings of fact and a statement of overriding consideration as well as adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project. Two, adoption of an ordinance approving amendment application number twenty-two-five oh one establishing the village standard specific plant. And approving a zone change for the project site. Three, approval of an ordinance approving development agreement number twenty-two-five oh one. Four, adoption of a resolution improving vesting tenant track map number twenty-two-five oh six. As conditioned as well as adoption of a resolution overruling the Orange County Airport Land Use Commission determination that the village standard specific plant. Is inconsistent with the airport and Ron's land use plan for John Wayne Airport, which includes supporting findings. Again, so that is a recommendation to the city council. Should the commissions recommend approval to the city council tonight? The project will then follow two additional public hearings. Before the city council, which have been tentatively scheduled for September sixth and October seventh for the second reading. Which will allow for additional public input for this project. That concludes staff's presentation. I am available to answer any of your questions. In addition to staff, we do have staff members from other departments that, that make up the development review committee. So that is staff members from our public works agency as well as community development. We also have our consultants on board as well as the applicant's consultant team is available for any questions that you may have. As part of the public comments that we, that we received prior to the three-thirty deadline. We did provide responses to those comments and those have been distributed to you as well.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and take comments or questions from the commission for staff. I'll begin with Commissioner Wu.
I want to thank staff for really spending a lot of time preparing these document. And make it very easy to read and a lot of time was put into this and coordination, not only with. Other government jurisdiction, but with the developer as well. And, and I appreciate that. My main question, do on the side of the community benefit agreement. The community benefit agreement, in this case, I see it as more of a municipal benefit agreement. And that's not necessarily bad as with other developments that we've had in the city such as main places and other. Over time, the community lose track of all those taxes, sales. Benefits and jobs and all that because we don't track them and we don't know where they go. Somewhere it goes into the city and in term of benefits to the community. Being an advocate on, on the disenfranchised and, and poor and those seeking jobs. I am a little concerned that we don't know where it goes. And whether or not we have an ability to direct where it goes in the future. But, but that's in the future. It doesn't happen on day one or it doesn't happen until after the construction. After tenants go in and so I think we need to work together on that. I just wanted to put both the staff and the developer on notice that. I know that the Saxon family has been very generous because we, one of the agents that worked for it. I know Gina talked about being hungry when they were growing beans and sometime the harvest and come as well when they would be hungry. So I do know the family has a caring for this community has contribute. There are two kinds of needs that we need that we, I like to put out. One is economic needs for jobs and, and job creation for people. And for us to support the small businesses in the city that is under siege right now and, and, and. They're having a hard time surviving and we're seeing a lot of businesses being closed. Hopefully while we directed the new economic engine here. What you are paying in as a developer into that pot will go out to benefit, you know, the rest of the city and the area. In term of affordable housing in, in the neighborhoods that need them and, and also in term of. Job creation benefits somehow. The most direct job benefit I do see staff and thank you for paying attention. It's the union jobs out there of which many of you live in the community because I see your trucks out there. You know, in, in our neighborhoods. So that I do see as a good thing too and beneficial. The five to, you know, the, the deviation from the fifteen. What do we get out of that so that we reduce it down to five? Can you go over that just one more time? That's the affordable inclusionary zone fee? And we're reducing it as part of this agreement?
That is correct, Commissioner Wu. So one of the requests by the applicant is to review, to reduce the current inclusionary in lieu fee from fifteen dollars to five dollars. So as mentioned, the ordinance, the, the Hoco ordinance does have a clause that allows for deviations. Of that fee through approval of a development agreement.
So, so I anticipate that that is because like on page twenty-five, twenty-five of the economic, under the title of five point four. Economic benefits of ongoing operation, we, we chose the benefit county wire is about two hundred and fifty-nine. Me, billion dollars, right? And the city capture of that is one hundred and nineteen million dollars, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, so we, we are going anticipating that there's going to be a lot of economic and job benefit to the city. Again, because we're, we're not a poor, we are a poor city with, with many unskilled labor. And, and with a lot of youth that are looking for jobs. And I wonder how that will be directed? How would that benefit Justin's department and also Mike's department in term? Is there, is there going to be a budget for that or is that's going to get just absorbed into the administration of the city? And, and I would hate to see that all go to the police department.
So the in lieu fee that will be paid by the applicant, the five dollars per habitable square footage. Amounts to approximately seven point one million dollars. That will have to be. Will have, that will go into the inclusion housing fund.
So that's meaning for the housing part, right?
That will need to be utilized for the production of affordable housing, that is.
I'm talking about the sales tax and the other benefits, you know, some of it's designated for schools, right? But by agreement, there, there, there's entities that you already captured some money for, right?
That's correct, Commissioner Wu. So in the realm of taxes.
Right.
Sales taxes, there's a portion that comes to the city. And that can be spent at the city council's discretion during the annual budgetary process. Property taxes similarly are split between school districts and cities. The inclusionary housing funds that are anticipated to be paid by this project. Would be directed toward Director Garcia's department for administration and production of affordable housing and related programs. And then the projected nine point three million dollars in community benefit payment under the development agreement. Would also be subject to the city's annual, city council's annual discretionary budget allocation process.
So that's where the community, if they want to ask for some of the budgeted, they have to ask it about that there, right?
That's correct. As part of the city's annual budget adoption process, our finance department goes out and does community-wide surveys. Polls online, does workshops, even comes to commission meetings like the planning commission to solicit that type of input to relay to the city council.
Yeah, in that it meets the intent of the community and economic benefit from this project that you worked out with the developer and, and very nicely. I just wanted to highlight that could have covered so many areas and, 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 and it's important to, to us as we search for. Revenue so I don't have to pay more sales tax and stuff like that. So the other thing I was wondering, would it be possible in the public space there? Since I think that was like three, three point six. since I think that was like 3.6 acres? That's going to be developed as public access space? That there be some kind of acknowledgement, land acknowledgement to the First Nations that was here before? By that, I mean, I don't mean a Mount Marshmore. I mean maybe a bench, you know, as you're walking through the exercise there or a little plaque or a tree and a plaque or something that to the nation that, you know, this is dedicated to people here before us or something like that. You'd work out the language. But I think it would go a long way culturally to acknowledge the people that was here that no longer have their land. And we've done that before. The city burned down Chinatown and now we have, going to have our memorial. And that was something we did, you know, to honor people that are part of the city, consistent with our general plan that we honor people that live in the city. So the last question I have has to do with financing. There's both private and self-financing by the developer. I was wondering on the source of the financing from the developer, what is the source of that? Is that tax credits or cash or investments or what? Or should I ask the developer that when they come?
Commissioner, like your native land acknowledgement question, I would encourage that question to also be posed to the applicant during the public hearing.
Thank you. Let's see, do I have any more? That's about it. I thank you very much for answering most of the question. I just want to highlight and then bring it out into the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Commissioner Fan.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just ask a couple of questions and then I'll release my time and then come back to me if we have time. My first question is, the one that, the one thing that sticks out to me is the conceptual phasing plan. It speaks of upwards to 20 years to fully develop this project. And the phasing plan itself, to me, seems a bit fractured, I guess, because Phase 1 seems to have developed most of the green space that's being proposed. And I think the green space is what is the biggest selling point in this project to me, the proposed green space. But it seems like once Phase 1 is developed, the centerpiece of the green space development is going to be completed last, right? That the green spine that goes from the North Corridor down to Sunflower, the majority of it would be developed during Phase 1, but then it abruptly stops in the middle. And we wait till Phase 2 to be developed to develop the top portion of the green space. And then the middle portion of the green space is not developed till the last phase of the development. To me, that seems, I mean, there might be other economic factors and construction logistics that goes into the phasing plan. But to me, it seems like it's a bit abrupt, no?
Commissioner, the phasing plan that you're referring to, so on page 42 of the draft specific plan, indicates the planting zones and also lays out the sort of open space areas. And so when one compares that against the phasing plan that was previously up on the slides, you could see actually that Phase 1, thanks Jerry, that Phase 1 includes the majority of commercial buildings in that village core as well as open space areas. So in terms of why the developer has elected to go down that path, again, could be asked during the public hearing. But if one were to just visualize overlaying these two atop one another, one could see that the planting zones image on page 42 kind of shows the footprints of commercial buildings as well as the, as well as the open space areas primarily that are publicly accessible being as part of Phase 1 of the project. And as future phases like Phase 5, which is in yellow, that would be the final sort of buildings in the project that would contain actually mostly private open space areas according to the plan. So again, at that point, the majority of public areas would be completed and the remaining portion would be for private resident use at that point. I'm not sure if that helps answer your question or give some insight. But again, the developer can always provide additional color to that description.
I appreciate it. My concern is that it's Phase 5 butts up against the access road, right? And I'm not sure how ultimately this will play out. But what I am imagining is that Phase 1 is completed and as you look up that Village Drive spine, you'll see construction fence, right? Because Phase 5 would be last to be built out. And then we have Phase 2 being developed and there's a disconnect of how the pedestrian would circulate and percolate down to Sunflower. And it would just be like a skinny sidewalk, right? Unless, you know, unless ultimately that there is a revision where the green space that is abutting the commercial building on Phase 5, you know, that gets built out. And so, you know, the green spine takes priority. But to me, that seems a bit abrupt. And then that would kind of dovetail into my other question is, you know, do we have a sense of the timeline per Phase? Like 20 years is quite a bit of time. I wouldn't want construction fencing to be up for Phase 5 for the next 15 years, right? So do we have a sense of how that would kind of play out? If not, that's fine. I know I put you on this one.
We do and we don't, Commissioner. So again, this kind of really depends on the applicant and as mentioned on the staff reports, really based on market conditions. But similar to what we've done for Main Place Mall, that's an example of like a phased development. We've always, as part of a planning process, have reviewed pedestrian public ground plans to ensure there's still that connectivity and there's not that disrupted aesthetics that you're concerned is. But I'll defer to the applicant with regards to timing of Phase 1.
I appreciate that, because my, the reason I ask that question is that for my specific ward on Harbor Boulevard, there are quite a bit of construction fences that are kind of fenced in with obviously the same language that we have in our specific plan that this property is owned by ex-developer. If there's any issue, please call that developer. But to me, you know, Harbor is, I guess, our territory, right? And it's one of the gateways our cities, just as Sunflower and Bristol would be. And to have construction fence up, especially since this project also abuts a very long project as well, my concern is this area would be just a lot of construction fencing. And so I'm curious to know a bit more about how the phasing would work out, yeah? That's all from me, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Fan. Vice Chair Benninger.
Thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to thank staff and also like to thank the applicant because they held a lot of meetings and a lot of neighbors only had to ask and they were there on it. So we appreciate that, that sort of outreach. To the city, when we talk about green open space on chart 3.5 or 3.4, it shows the private area on top of the buildings. Hey, I personally like that. I used to, well, my, two of my children lived in New York for a while and enjoyed that. But is that considered into the green space when you talk about green spaces for this project?
So the rooftop plan that I'm showing right now, it's basically just highlighting the private open space that will be available to the residents. So that encompasses 6.3 acres. The public accessible open space is a 7.5 acres.
Okay, so it's not included when we talk about public space?
It's included in terms of public space within general terms, right? So it's available for public space for the residents. But what we're talking about, the 7.5 acres of publicly accessible open space, that's open space open to the general public.
Very good. Okay. Also, I have a concern. Do we have, and I know this city has any regulations on the bike pass? I like the idea of the bike pass. I'm very supportive. But I'm noticing that the width, Bear Street versus Sunflower are not the same. One, you're looking at 60, the other one looking at 10. I'm also kind of concerned too about whether there's any protective barrier or bump or to protect the bikes away from pedestrians. Do we require any of that in the city?
We do. And the two bike paths that are being proposed are two different types. So the Sunflower one is a Class 4. That one will have a dedicated buffer. And then the one off of Bear Street is just your typical bike lane that would just be kind of painted similar to what you see on these other local streets. So the one along Sunflower kind of resemble those that are kind of built along Bristol Street.
So if I listen correct, the painted section, you could get pedestrians and bikes together?
No, no.
No.
Yeah, the project includes its own separate sidewalks, pedestrian sidewalks.
Okay. And there is some protection to keep you from going from one to the other?
Yes.
Okay. Another concern that I have, is it coming down Bear Street, looking at the proposal? It just appears to just be blank walls from all the way down. Sure like to see something coming out on the Bear Street, whether it be industrial, small shops, wherever, just as you go further down Bear Street, especially in front of what I've heard is Crystal Court, you have a lot of breakup. You don't have that one consistent wall space all the way down. Any consideration of that from the city?
Yeah, so as part of discussions with the applicant, again, this is basically to establish a specific plan, which sets the framework of allowed uses. So the site plan that I'm showcasing right now is basically just kind of highlighting big picture, like the vision for it. But doesn't necessarily mean that mixed use or commercial uses are not allowed elsewhere on the site. In terms of architectural articulation for the buildings along Bear Street, even those that are but the communities of St. Albans and for sites at the lake, we will require as part of the development review process that the applicant provide architectural details. So we will have enhanced architectural articulations for those facades.
Thank you. So Commissioners, for, and if I'm understanding the question correctly, you're asking Commissioner or Vice Chair Benninger if the facades of the buildings along Bear Street would be garages or could they be enhanced with mixed use or even residential just uses? As Jerry's pointing out, this is a specific plan level drawing. So it could take that form or it could take the form of a decorated garage, like not just a raw, you know, garage, but treated architecturally. If you're asking, are you asking for more than just the option? Are you asking if that is something that's required by the specific plan as currently written? Because if there's a concern or there's a desire to explore that further, I think that is something that would be beneficial also to ask the applicant during the public hearing.
I'm asking if it could be explored further. I don't want to see just a blank wall all the way down, even a little decorative. But let's just see what we can do to make that look much more attractive. A lot of small businesses will do that. They might have to have it all the way down. But there are other parts in the city where the parking, because that is going to be a parking garage on the other side of that wall, first floor. And that'd be, I think, would enhance the appearance of that Bear Street in that area. Also, talking about traffic, I do like what's being proposed. My only concern is timing. The improved traffic lights down Bear Street could be used now. And the crosswalk on Bear Street could be used now. Does the city, when it comes to a large project like this, have any say as to the timing of when these lights are going to go in?
Vice Chair, I'll defer that to the applicant. I can't really remember the traffic analysis impact report that was prepared. Did it require the installation of the street signals at a certain time of the development? But we also have our own public works team that may be able to answer the question.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Rizewell, I'm a senior transportation analyst with the Public Works Agency. In terms of the installation of traffic signals, it depends on the phasing of the development as needed. So as Jerry talked about, you know, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, it triggers a need for a traffic signal to come in based on safety, the number of trips that are coming through, also pedestrians crossing. As there's no development there currently or there's existing development, we would have to do a study in terms of existing need. But if you're talking about when it's going to get phased, it has to go in when the project's actually in.
What I really pointed out too is Plaza, I have no problem with that, but Bear Street could use that light now. And so I will ask the applicant the same question. But to me, the time in that would be, that'd be the first thing built for me, would be the light on Bear Street.
Yeah, and the applicant recognized that and it is warranted from their study in terms of their traffic impact analysis. That's why they're putting it in.
Vice Chair Benninger, again, I would just defer that question directly to the applicant. Just remembering right now, the signal on Bear Street and WACAM was actually not warranted by the traffic analysis. So you might ask the applicant if there's visibility to install that prior.
Very good. Thank you. Well said. Right now.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll go ahead and ask my question next. My question's next. My first set of questions will likely be for CDA, the Community Development Agency. So I'm interested in learning a bit more about the application of our inclusionary housing ordinance to this project. So I don't know if Judson, our Housing Division Manager, or Mike Garcia, the Executive Director of CDA, would like to come forward. They're both coming. Thank you.
Chair, Commissioners, as mentioned, the inclusionary housing fee that would be paid for this project, the 7.1 million, would go into our inclusionary housing fund and it can be used for a variety of uses. Most of the eligible uses that are, that we've been putting the money towards has been for development and production of affordable housing or preservation of affordable housing. And, but it gets into, we can get into eviction prevention programs with our inclusionary housing funds. And there's a whole host of different eligible uses. And so if you want to get into more specifics, I'm happy to, and Judson's here as well, our Housing Manager.
Thank you, yes. So for the record, are there any affordable housing units being built on site?
No, there are none.
Okay. And you stated that at the $5 rate, the city will collect 7.1 million in inclusionary housing funds, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so around 21 million would have been collected at the $15 a square foot rate?
Yeah, 21.3.
21.3, thank you. Can you share anything about how the city, the city's both staff and the ad hoc committee landed on the $5 rate in the development agreement we're considering tonight?
It was just a negotiated item throughout the development of the specific plan.
Okay, what else? And then, so I know that another way that applicants can get the $5 reduced rate is when they agree to build with skilled and trained workforce. Do you know if that's something that the applicant will be doing? And I'll also be asking them.
Yeah, they are working with the carpenters union as part of this project.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions for now. Thank you. I also had questions for the Public Works Agency, specifically on the truck routes. So I looked at more information on the truck routes on page 122 of the little binder we got here. And I'm just wondering, will there be, is there any proposed road repair along these truck routes?
For the designated truck routes, that's in the table. Yeah, we do, we have CIP projects for, in terms of roadway rehab. So along truck routes, we're also looking at Assembly Bill 98, identifying and actually listing out what those truck routes are formally within the city. And those get on a priority list in terms of payment rehabilitation.
Okay, so would that road repair be have- Okay, so would that road repair be happening before those truck routes are being used during or after? I'm just, I'm wondering what the timing would look like, and if repairs take place before those truck routes are utilized, or then the road's going to become re-damaged, and would there be a repair process after that?
So the city has a citywide traffic index, so it's TI values. That's basically the condition of the roads and how we prioritize which ones are being rehabbed. So it depends on the phasing of the project. As there's more trips that are added to each road, that's how we prioritize which ones are going to be triggered by our traffic index.
Thank you. And then just another question, a follow-up on Vice Chair Benninger's request on the traffic light being a part of phase one. So if I understood correctly, that could happen if the applicant was amicable to it?
Yeah, it's really with the phasing of the different components of the project. So if you're bringing in, you know, say, the residential component of it, it has an associated trip generation. That's going to trigger the need for that signal, so they would go in when that phase is going. So it corresponds to the phase, the phasing of the project.
I understand that, and if the applicant was amicable to installing a traffic light before getting to the phase that would require it, is that something that is possible?
It is possible, but the phasing is contingent on market market conditions. So, you know, if the market doesn't dictate, you know, phase three or four, and that's when the signal was proposed, it may not be warranted. So we'd have to actually study the need for it now with existing conditions, whether or not that's warranted or not. And if it is warranted, then that's something possibly that we could get.
And if it is not warranted, is that something we can still get if the applicant is open to it, to installing earlier than required?
Sure, if the applicant's open to it, we could do any improvements.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's what I wanted to come from. And those are all my questions for now. Thank you.
Chair, just to add some extra color to that, the traffic signal at Wright and 17th Street by the car wash, for example, that was not warranted, but the developer in his application for the car wash said, "I'd like to build a car wash and a new traffic signal." And so the city was like, sure, go ahead. So that's how we got that signal there. So I think, again, in your own words, asking the applicant also outside of a warrant, would they come in proactively with it? The city has accepted that in the past as well.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that there is precedent in proactively providing improved traffic lights and new traffic lights. I'll move on to Commissioner Oliva.
I want to thank city staff for putting together this presentation. It's extensive, so thank you so much. It answers a lot of questions ahead of time. But my pressing question, and I don't know if I should just ask the applicant, but I'll ask staff first, is what is the, I guess, the caveat for the valet when it comes to the parking management? What do, what is the yes or no for including that?
So as part of the application, and the applicant could speak better on this, I believe they might be providing some form of valet services for a particular tenant, a commercial tenant that they have in mind. But in terms of the parking management strategies, it'll be warranted should there be an issue with parking. That could be at staff discretion or other staff member from any other department. So when we see that traffic is being impacted, or traffic is impacting the neighboring community, we could initiate those additional parking measures.
So we have to see like a traffic parking issue, and then parking management strategy can be implemented?
Exactly, or if the applicant, as part of their property management efforts, sees that there's like a need for additional parking, they could also activate those additional measures as well.
That makes sense. That's the extent of my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliva. Commissioner Leo?
Could you, could you put up slide 36? It's the masking one. With the two developments next to each other? So I guess what I want my fellow commissioners to see is that if the project is approved, this is what the south end of town is going to look like, and we don't know what the Versailles is going to do. Across the street is the South Coast Plaza. We don't know what Sigurdstrom and Sons have planned for that, but as things become more urban in this area, it's what it's going to look like. And if my calculation is correct, we will have approved, if we approve this tonight, we will have approved over, we will have approved a 20-acre park between Bristol Related and this one. We will have approved more housing. A commercial retail base that should generate more revenue for the city. In addition to community benefits that will exceed $20 million easily into the city. I think it's probably, we're probably going to see more development, not on our side, because we can't do that right now. I'm sure we will see some development on the Costa Mesa side. There was approval in Costa Mesa, if you saw it in the newspaper. The old Trinity Broadcast Network, 142 for sale properties between single detached family homes and condos. And as you know, retail is changing every day, so I assume Sigurdstroms who take care of their properties will upgrade South Coast Plaza as well. So from my perspective, and I understand Fam's question, if I understand it correctly, the stuff closest to Sunflower will be done first, right? The one on the corner and some of that open space without the high-rise, correct?
That's correct.
That's the first phase.
That's correct.
The second phase is a butts Versailles, right? The third phase is the back piece, then the fourth is the bigger commercial, and the fifth is the end. So we may get a lot of the benefits upfront, at least from the residential, and I understood Commissioner Benninger's questions. I'm trying to understand where the blank wall is when you look, when I look at the landscaping. I'm not sure where that is. When I look at the landscaping on Bear Street, I understand the questions about Wacom. That's a traffic, that's going to be a traffic study issue, and you guys figure out how busy it is. It backs up already. And then I understand the traffic management question from Commissioner Oliva. I assume that Sigurdstrom and Sons with the parking across the street will figure out a way to manage it in the short term and long term. And so when I look at this, I look at this and I say, we've really dug into the general plan. We've maximized what we could from the general plan. Developers have been willing to do business in Santa Ana. And I think it's really, at the end of the day, for the good of the city to do this. We have gotten money to do affordable housing, which is important in the city as well, and the creation of jobs, as Commissioner Wu said. So from my perspective, those are my comments. I understand that this is going to be traffic. I get it. But we all get it. If you've been in this county long enough, you get on a freeway, you get on a road, there's traffic. The Irvine Company would tell you the Jamboree is a great road. Have you been on it at 4 o'clock? It's a parking lot. But they'll say, oh, it's a D intersection, not a F. So good luck to you. And I'm sure the construction folks in the audience know, they prefer to work from 7 to 3, so there's less traffic when they leave to go wherever they got to go home. So I think that we understand what's going on here. I hope that for me, what we attract here, the residents will demand a higher quality product. They will demand access to the fastest internet and all that other stuff, and the developer is going to take care of that. So I think it's, it's probably going to look like a much different city in 20 years from now, or 10 probably. And I think that staff has done a great job, as well as the city council and the ad hoc, and working with the developer to get a really good project out of this. So appreciate the work and appreciate the work, and we'll see what public comment brings us.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Scamia?
Cool. Thank you, Chair. All right, let's see, let's start at the top. So I guess, Jerry, just for some of the residential concerns, I think on dust mitigation, I was wondering if you might be able to walk through, I guess it looks like page 42 and page 43 of the supplemental EIR, just as far as what staff, sorry, what both the developer and staff will be doing just to mitigate the overall dust and construction noise impact?
Thank you, Commissioner Scamia. So as part of every, like any other project, we're going to be asking for a construction plan. And that'll be for each phase, and that's kind of to point out to your Commissioners, that is to control dust, as well as to control traffic, truck traffic, and mitigate noise vibration as much as possible.
Okay, and I guess just on that, in general, I know there'll probably be specifics as far as who to call if there are issues from residents, but you know, will planning be the first stop, or at that point, it's already kind of a building services in case anything is happening out there, and they just want to call it in?
Yeah, typically, we'll have a dedicated contact person from the city, but as well as from the applicant's team that residents could contact to make complaints or whatnot with that matter.
Okay. All right. And I guess just more generally, I know we're going, I guess, from SD 48, so that's specific plan that's already there. And now we're going, sorry, the specific development, and now we're going into a specific plan. I guess how comparable is the just totality of the overall density, allowable uses, mixture of uses, design? How comparable is that to what we are now seeing in other district center zones and kind of district, like, you know, heavy intense or high intensity areas? Is this like pretty comparable to other plans we have in the city? And if so, like kind of what was the basic of the, the basic outline of the agreement based on from pre-existing plans?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty consistent in terms of the kind of same relations and design standards that you see within the Bristol Related specific plant. And that was done purposely to make sure both sites kind of have a cohesive environment. But a lot of that also was kind of piggyback off from the main place specific plan as well. And just to give you more information on that, but our our Pella Ground plans are being drafted currently by our staff, are also looking at these two specific plans to kind of create the guiding principles for those Pella Ground plans as well.
Okay, perfect. And I guess this is just maybe, and I'm not sure how exactly it can be included at this phase. So I didn't get the chance to go through every single individual allowable use within the zone. But I guess what I don't necessarily want to happen is that, let's say, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now, there might be a slightly new use that maybe doesn't quite fall under a particular category, and rather than having to completely amend everything, which I imagine would be a little bit more procedurally intensive. If there are, if there is any thought or any option or, you know, possibility of then allowing for staff review for ancillary uses that then are in line with those comparable zones. So not kind of creating anything new, but if we do happen to approve a new type of use that comes down the road in the main place specific plan, that that can also then be added. So again, just to kind of like alleviate staff and allow the most amount of flexibility in what is designed to be a mixed-use zone.
Yeah, so the specific plan was kind of crafted to take that into consideration, Commissioner Scamia. So ultimately, the Executive Director of the Plan and Building Agency has that discretion to make interpretations for certain uses. Down the line, right, we might, like, we work, for example, a couple of years ago was something that was kind of new, that no one was really know how to regulate that use. But yes, the chapter six of the specific plan has language with regards to that flexibility. Should the director not feel that the use is appropriate, or does it feel comfortable, could defer that matter to the Plan Commission?
Okay, yeah, as long as there's like a reasonable appeal process, yeah, I think staff first, and then appeal process is usually a pretty good standard there. Thank you for that. And I guess this just goes to, you know, a little bit of this, kind of how the Ad Hoc Committee created the final development agreement. I'm just wondering if there were any concerns about that phasing requirement? So I know that it looks like we have to then get up to the 360 units, and, you know, sorry, no more than 360 units before the commercial is constructed. But is there like a building that might be on hold until the commercial building is constructed? Is there like a 370-unit building that might be paused? Or was that kind of already taken into consideration, or is maybe a better question for the applicant as far as like any worry that they have with that initial building hurdle?
Thank you, Commissioner. The Ad Hoc Committee's recommendations took into account feedback from the developers team as well. So the numbers weren't sort of like arbitrarily prescribed, but they were put out there. Applicant had a opportunity to sort of like review, comment, and give feedback. So that's how those numbers landed. But as a contract, yes, if a project came in with 361 units, and that obligation had not been fulfilled, then the terms of the development agreement would apply. And, but if there's any further questions about what the applicant feels about the number 360, they're also available to answer that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I think as some of the other Commissioners started talking about the Inclusionary Housing Fee and what it would look like at, oh my gosh, the full freight, which would be 21.3 million. But then I guess we're looking at 7.1 going into housing still, so the $5 rate, with that $9.3, sorry, $9.3 million coming in, just general community, general fund dollars to be essentially at the city council's discretion then. And then, I guess, for me, like, just again, for the members of the public, then we would be looking at a $4.9 million gap, right? So like, what is that exchange? And I think that one thing that wasn't necessarily captured in a dollar value amount is that public open space. And I think that that is where, if we looked at public open space, and if we were getting that 7.5 acres or, you know, whatever that exact number was, it would be much more than $4.9 million to construct, maintain. And so I don't know if there was thought of including that as part of the, you know, just overall benefit package with some sort of comparable number attached to that.
Yeah, just for context, when the related Bristol project was proposed to the city, and they came in with their 13.1 acres or so of open space, the city did go through a lot of mathematical calculations at what it would cost the city to build, program, and maintain open space for an initial, let's say, 10, 20-year period, and it came to about $1 million an acre to build with land acquisition, construction, and annual programming and maintenance, all that good stuff. So while that is not reflected in the quantifiable numbers that you see with like jobs and all that, it does contribute to the picture of how some of these numbers were arrived at.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, just again, for that background and context.
And then just to add to that, Commissioner Scamia, there's other impact fees that developers have to pay, for example, school fees, right? That's not included in the staff report. So that's kind of part of a balancing act that your commission will have to kind of look into, right, as well?
Yeah. And I guess to that end, so we, just as a general practice, don't really note the economic impact on other known government entities, right? So we could include it, but it's not necessarily part of each and every one of our calculations. I know for me, it actually can be a contributive factor of saying like, well, this money is also going to our school districts, and you want to be supportive of those entities as well. But obviously, when we're only dealing with agency finances, maybe it's not included. All right, yeah, and that was, I guess, the thing that I was wondering. The Economic Appendices, I guess, C, has a really nice breakdown of the kind of detailed level. So I don't know if we want to include that in slide 45, or maybe just a little bit more of the breakdown as far as where the revenue is coming from, because I think in the appendices, it was a nice little slide. It didn't seem like it was going to be that much more to add. And I thought it really explained well where all the rest of the money was coming from and where it was being spent. Let's see. So in the EIR, there was a reference to archaeological and paleontological resources, so that would be page 411. It's referencing potentially using the Natural History Museum of Los Angeles, and I know that it was maybe only as a potential. But if at all possible, and we can always kind of encourage individuals to deposit with the Cooper Center, which is kind of the county one, and if we ever do have a natural history museum, it would likely be based out of the Cooper Center's collection. So anything we can do to kind of add support and work with them. And also, though, if there are any specific issues as to why that can't be utilized as a center, I think that's something we would need to correct, so we'd want to be made aware of that. Okay. Similarly, with just an overall fix, we're going to be overriding the airport land use. Folks, a lot down here, I'm not sure if this is going to be the final, final time we have to, or will maybe potentially have to. But I'm wondering, is there going to be, or does staff, is staff aware of any potential future revisions to that environs, land use element from the airport? Is there going to be any chance to kind of comment and take a look at that, or is that pretty much an FAA, federal mathematical calculation that we cannot ignore and just have to override each time?
I would suggest that we pose that question to our colleagues at the county, given that the airport is county-owned and operated. I can tell you that when one looks at the agendas for these meetings, it's not just the city of Santa Ana, it's Irvine, Newport Beach, and even legislative changes like to housing elements to allow for more opportunity sites. For example, in the city of Newport Beach, trigger the ALUX review. So it could be for literal physical development projects like what's before you tonight, or simply like legislative zoning and housing opportunity sites?
Yeah, because they've been getting a lot of overrides recently. Okay, and really, I think it's more of the, in most instances, maybe I'm less worried about it, but then because it triggers the two-thirds majority vote at the council, and I don't know if we already have an idea of how many council members might already be recused because of like space dis- of like space distancing and/or employment, does that two-thirds number come from the body as a whole, so out of seven, or is it present majority?
Our understanding is that it's body as a whole, and in advance of tonight's meeting, just as we did with the commission, we've also evaluated any conflicts of interest with the council as well.
Okay, and then, let's see, and then just like the last overall, like, kind of site design is, looks like slide, page 45, or slide 45? Let's see, I don't, actually, yeah, I guess it will be page 45 of the specific plan itself, so just like when we look at South Plaza Drive, so I do see kind of South Plaza as really much more of a street rather than a road, and I know I brought this up kind of in previous meetings, where I understand on Bear Street, we have less activity, it's very much in a location that's meant for travel, you know, basically to get to and from, like, north and south, and includes a bicycle pathway, you know, parking facing, or parking structure facing the street, less direct activities and kind of openings, less doors, all that, but Plaza Drive does seem to be kind of that area, or that major artery that connects both related and both sides of this particular project, and at 80 feet wide just for the road, then plus another, look like 15 or 20 feet on either side with sidewalks and enhanced improvements and parking, I'm afraid that eventually that will feel more like a barrier and boundary between spaces rather than a connecting street, so I, I just don't want us to basically come back and have to do like seven bulbouts in an area that's currently being developed in order to narrow the street in the future when we see that maybe we don't want this to be a roadway, we want this particular section to be a street, though I don't know how that potentially interacts with the traffic analysis, I just do feel that, you know, at the very least, that right-hand turn lane, dedicated right-hand turn lane is maybe unnecessary, and again, adds to the overall width of that street, when it should be a little bit more narrow, and something that really is part of what I envision as kind of a larger urban campus with smaller connecting streets between Bristol related and this particular project over here at the Village. So that's the only kind of just design observation, and I know that that's probably a little bit like baked into the cake at this point, but it is still ongoing concern for myself, and then, to just, let's see, okay, I had one other thing. Sorry, it's Commissioner Leo, Commissioner Leo has a question on, like, where that parking is going, so it looked like figure 38A, it doesn't necessarily show kind of like the height of the parking lot, so I think that that's the section where we're going to be seeing the parking, so it's done parking as like surface level, but not visually showing that there's going to be a building with, you know, kind of, you know, what that looks like, so I think that's where I was envisioning where that parking is going, but I didn't necessarily see it there in that diagram, so the only thing that wanted to serve, and that was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Skamia. Are there any other questions from commission for staff? I see a few, I'll begin with Commissioner Wu.
I call your attention to page 115 on administration. The responsibility and enforcement will fall upon the City of Santa Ana Planning and Building Agency's executive director, so Ali, are you prepared for this project? And do you have staffing enough to help to ensure that it stays on track and that we move along with all the permits and inspections and all, you have nothing to expect, Chris?
A, I was born ready, and B, we have the best planning staff in the state of California, if not the United States, that can handle this project.
Yes, and I understand that, because, because we know that about you guys, that alleviates our fear in the community that, you know, there'll be delays and things like that, this is a major project for us and for the developer and for that area, and it impacts the economics of the city very much, and there's a lot of details with the design, and I have no problem with the path and everything, and the use of it for public space, but I think the, the two things that's going to work together is the workers actually going to work and their motivation, we've got some of the best union workers out there, and also a developer and owner that will be working with you closely and have built a relationship, but then I call your attention to the, another page, and that is page 123, where as we, we are doing these things, the developer is financing a lot of the development for the sewer system, the water system, and the private internal streets, et cetera, et cetera, and landscaping, but the ownership of that will go to different entities, to the city, or to the private association, or homeowner association, and things like that, and it's spelled out here, and I find this is really neat, because they're paying for it, we keep up the upkeep and the maintenance of that, and, and again, that kind of goes back to oversight, that comes through your department as well, so I just want to point that out, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu, Commissioner Pham.
Thank you, Chair. For the architecture standards, the way I'm reading it in the specific plans, the landscaping choices seem to be very descriptive, but the architectural design standards seem to be very prescriptive, right, the, the language is broad, you know, style, contemporary materials, you know, arty, and, 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 you know, and resistant to outdoors, so my understanding is that once the site, the specific plan is approved, if the specific plan is approved, then there is still a development project review that the planning staff does administratively, and so when the building design does become more concrete, what design standards are our staff drawing from to kind of deem whether or not this project is contemporary, or whether or not this project fits within the context of Bristol, because the language in the specific, in the specific plan doesn't seem to illustrate, there are kind of descriptive elements that the developer needs to follow, so I'm wondering when it does come to planning staff's review, what are the objective standards that planning staff will be reviewing the project up against?
So the specific plan, Commissioner Pham, was kind of left in terms of having that flexibility when it came to urban design standards, right, because you don't want to lock in a certain architectural style when two, three years from now might be outdated, or like there's newer technology that has improved, so we wanted to provide that flexibility, but we do have citywide design guidelines that talk about architectural styles, and it goes into more details that if you're doing contemporary, these are the requirements, if you're doing craftsmanship, these are the requirements, Spanish, these are the requirements, so as part of the development review process, we will take those design standards into consideration when reviewing projects in this specific plan, similar to main place as well.
And, sorry, the images that are used as references to the, the overall design spirit, is that cho- was that chosen by staff, or was that chosen by the development team?
That was chosen by the development, the applicant.
Okay, yeah, because I like it, that's, that's what, that's what I would imagine a contemporary development would look like, but I wasn't sure if it was something that staff chose, because that would give me a bit of, you know, it would give me a direction of what I think staff would be reviewing for, right, because if these images shows are very contemporary, very lush and vegetation, and, and that's, that was staff's direction, then I could be comfortable with that when staff reviews the future project, that's going to be in line with what staff is looking for, whereas, you know, so I just want to make sure that, that there is a, an understanding between staff and, and the development team on, on the overall look and feel of the project, yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner, I do want to share in general on these projects, and Jerry touched on it earlier, the public realm improvements, like sidewalk widths, street tree plantings, bike lane configurations, these will all be consistent along South Bristol, Sunflower, all that, so that it's a seamless experience for the pedestrian in the public right of way, or the cyclist or motorist, but the developer, as with any project, has their own vision for the project through their architectural team and comes to the city with that on their application, so we balance their vision with what is meant for continuity of like the streetscape, so that it fits in as like puzzle pieces in an overall mosaic, as opposed to just like hodgepodge sidewalk widths, bike lanes, all that.
I appreciate that, and then my next question is with the vested map, I'm sure this is not the case, but I figure I'll ask the question anyways, the way that the parcels are subdivided, right, my assumption is that city staff has worked with the development team to make sure that as divided, future projects, even in its max development capacity, will fit within the allowable parcel, and that we don't come into a situation where five years from now, it goes in front of the next planning commission for density bonus, or for a parking concession, that's something that I do not want, I want to make sure that staff has looked at the way these parcels are subdivided, that even at its max capacity, it delivers on parking, it delivers on whatever objective standards that we have now, so that we don't concede on open space, we don't concede on parking, or whatever it may be that we need to concede, because state density bonus laws, like we've experienced in other projects, this commission does not have the authority to really improve upon those requirements, so I want to make sure that, and I'll let you speak, but I also make sure that, that that's in consideration.
Yes, so the, the size of the lots, as well as the configurations, were part of the applicant's team in analyzing the visibility, right, to ensure that they are buildable lots in the future, they can also go hand-in-hand with their phasing plan, but as, as these implementing projects come on board, they will be standalone development projects, meaning that each law will be self-sustaining and comply with the development standards as outlined in the specific plan.
And then last question, a little bit nitpicky here, but the floor-to-floor height for residential is 10 feet, the floor-to-floor height for commercials 12 feet on the ground floor, my imagination is that you want the streetscape to be consistent, why didn't we just put a consistent residential at 12, commercial at 12, because on the ground floor, we want signage to be consistent, I know that the developer has the option of just consistently building out 12 feet, but I'm just saying, I just want to understand why the minimum, unless that's a carryover from the general plan, then it is what it is.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you, so those are typical floor heights found in those types of developments, my experience on development projects where there's a mixture of uses at the ground level, like residential and commercial, is that our, the design team, the architects, will usually use a consistent sort of architectural feature, so that from the exterior, you're not looking at like uneven, you know, eyebrows or something like that, that it reads consistently across, even though interior, there might be like a drop ceiling, or, you know, maybe even a double volume on the inside, but that at least architecturally, it reads as a consistent level instead of an uneven elevation.
Thank you, that's all from me, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Pham, Vice Chair Benninger.
I just have one simple question, this really is for Public Works, I realize that on the bike lane on Sunflower will tie into what related it's planning to do, so that'll be a continuous, but on Bear Street, right now, if we, it's going to stop at the end of this project and nothing go in front of St. Albans, is this plan of Public Works to extend that bike lane all the way up to MacArthur? Not hearing yes or no.
So according to my guess, and I believe that is part of the city's master bicycle plan, so it's already kind of outlined in that plan.
Very good.
Thank you, I have one question, might be for a CDA or planning, but can somebody remind us, so in the AHOCO, our inclusionary housing policy, to trigger the $5 reduced fee, there needs to be a commitment to utilizing skilled and trained workforce, what does that commitment look like, is there a certain number of project labor agreements that need to be had, or a certain number of unions that need to be included, I'm wondering if there's a specification?
Yes, thank you, Adam, Chair, in that, I wasn't sure if you were going to ask that question, or if the commission was going to ask that question, so the, the language is actually or, so a developer can enter into a development agreement with the city to set and establish a specific in-lu fee, or they can, they can use skilled and trained labor, and so in this case, the developer is entering into a development agreement with the city.
Thank you, so if they were going with the or skilled and trained labor, what would that requirement be?
So if, if they were to, sorry, so if they were to, if it was to be entering into a development agreement?
So if they were going to use skilled and trained labor, and that's how they were getting the $5 reduced fee, what is the requirement for skilled and trained labor, is a specific number of unions need to be involved, the specific number of, I'm just wondering, is there a specific?
Yes, that, that ordinance has specific language relative to the percentage of, of labor that must be used for skilled and trained as part of that, and they would enter into a skilled and trained workforce agreement.
And what, what is that percentage?
I can pull it up, let me see here. Or I'll have it as well.
Chair, are you asking about the percentage that's mandated by ordinance?
The percentage that's mandated by the ordinance, because then I'm wondering the percentage that currently exists, I'm just curious about how they compare.
So it's codified in the ordinance between November 16, 2021, and December 31, 2025, that it's 30% of workforce utilizing two or more construction trades brings the rate down to $10 a square foot, and then 60% of workforce utilizing three or more construction trades brings the amount down to $5 a square foot.
Thank you, and then, this may be a question for the applicant, but is staff aware of what the percentage of skilled and trained workforce being proposed as of now is, and how many unions or trades are a part of that?
That is a question best directed towards the applicant team.
Thank you, I'll ask it then.
A follow-up to your question, will the worksite be protected from invasion?
Yes, it'll be developed and constructed in accordance with all safety standards of the state of California, but again, the developer, given their experience in construction, can add any color to that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Lea, do you have any additional questions?
No additional questions for staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo.
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Skamia.
No, right now.
Thank you, so seeing as the commission no longer has questions, I'm going to call for a 10 to 15-minute recess before we start the public hearing.
15-minute recess before we start the public hearing.
Thank you everyone for waiting. And now that we're all back, we're gonna go ahead and start. So the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter?
Thank you so much Chair Ramos. So a lot of good questions and I'm gonna try to move through and also be respectful of all of your time. So if you need to remind me of something, I think I have good notes, but you will be the judge of that. So before I jump into each one-
Excuse me, sorry, can you get closer, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Did that come from right there? Wow. You came from over there in my ear. That was an incredible magic trick. So I thought I was four. Okay, alright. Is that better? Good, okay, alright. As we discussed in the study session, this project is incredibly intentional. And part of where you see that come out, as we've discussed, and it was in the presentation as well, is this is a large development. This is a large project. But it's not often that when you partner with a sophisticated, large city like the city of Santa Ana, that the developer brings in a project that's significantly below the general plan densities and allowable infrastructure as a project like this. The project would allow for over 2,100 units, the families bringing in less than 1,600. Why? It really speaks to many of the questions that you brought up today. A concern, because you're great representatives of your community, about what's going to come, what's it going to look like, how is it going to integrate into the community. The five phasing is greatly intentional. It's to make sure that the family can build a project and deliver it to the city of Santa Ana in a manner that is consistent with the quality. So the ideas here that I, in hearing you talk, is specificity, detail, and quality. Those are the three elements that you will see come out of this. And it's born out of the fact that we have a number, you know, I think we joked about it at the last meeting, at one of the Sunshine meetings, we had an individual stand up and just said, you know, once again, someone's just bringing a project and ramming all, everything they can build down our throats. And we just said, you know, what's the project? 1583. And it's just, he was mad and he didn't even understand why. And he said, I'm sure there's gotta be something to that. So as I walk through your questions, which I thought were all incredibly important questions on detail, I hope it comes out that even with the project the family's brought in, the FAR of five, our FAR is below three, it's to bring a quality project that will be timeless for the city of Santa Ana and for the Sagerstrom family. And they're very proud to be a neighbor of yours within the community. So I'm gonna attempt to kind of work through as the questions, as the questions came, and I'll start with Commissioner Wu. You had a question on the financing of it. It's really too early to know exactly what the mix will be, but it'll be part of investor and owner capital put in and a mixture of debt as well. The project is a very expensive project. I think we talked about at the study session, across the street, and Commissioner Pham, this might speak to some of your questions on architecture and fitting in and design, at least specifically in the Bristol area around it, is it looks like we built an office portfolio, right? Park Tower, Center Tower, Plaza Tower, Two Town Center, the Noguchi Gardens, the park, the Performing Arts Center, all of those buildings built individually to make sure that they were of the highest quality, integrated perfectly within the vision for those areas. So this is a significant endeavor for the family in building a project of this size. Later on, we're gonna talk, because I think some of your questions with regard to parking were important ones. Sometimes the developer also is the constituent. So during your process with Related, they were discussing the 1.3. So it seems odd, but I was asked, as I was leading this project, by members of the family and the executive team, is that 1.3 okay for us? Because the first place you're going to see, if Related does not properly park that 1.3, is going to be on our property. We're immediately across the street from that property. We analyzed it. We felt that that number was justified for Related's project. But then we felt, and this is where being in the community, I think, is important, is the family felt, we're a smaller project, we're maybe a third of the size of that project, why don't we bring a ratio higher than that amount? That was in no way, as I just stated here, we believe that the ratio that this body and the city council put forward for Related was adequate. We wanted, we listened to what was happening within the community, and we said, let's try to ease some of those concerns and fears, because we do view this, this body, this city as a partner. It's been a partner for a long time, and we heard those from the community. And what we did in that process as well, so we were part of the general plan when the city's outreach went from 500 feet to 1,000 feet to 2,000 feet, we went beyond the 2,000 feet in our outreach, just to make sure that we did not bring you or uncover, we uncovered problems before we came to you. So in that, we kind of talked about the financing. We talked a little bit about the architecture. Commissioner Pham, I'll get more into it as I move through, if you have additional questions on that. And then on the parking, we really must have that parking work. We're heavily committed. You see the additional parking plan, and Commissioner Oliva, you asked a great question. You don't want to deal with problems when they become a problem. That's not how we deal with it, but I think that's the safeguard. You know, there's a term, trust but verify, and I think we feel that the city trusts us, but I think we owe you that in having a backup plan, should we see something, because that problem will seep onto our properties, and we don't want to see that happen, just as we didn't want to see the Related project negatively affect us, and we felt that it wouldn't. So we brought in that backup plan just to make sure that you could stand to your constituents within the city of Santa Ana and say, we have a way to deal with this if this doesn't work. So financing, architecture, parking. So I'll move on. I think the next question was from Commissioner Pham. Do you have any other questions, Commissioner Wu? I just want to make sure that I address all your issues. Commissioner Pham, phasing. I think that was an excellent question. It leads to this discussion of intentionality. The family has to make sure each phase works. And with regard to your keen eye on the open space and phasing, we believe that the Phase One as designed today creates place, that that is what everything will emanate out, Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four, and Phase Five. That is what will create space and start to bring the community connected to the project. I believe you had asked the question, but I think it was a theme, an important theme brought up by a number of different commissioners here as well. And that theme was, gosh, we don't want to see a dirty construction site with fencing that's not operable. We need, for this project to be successful, we need each phase to feel like it is open and operable at the time we complete that phase. I think the estimate on Phase One, Commissioner Pham, was approximately four years. I can't commit that each phase would be four years. I don't know, there are smarter people than I, I had to ask that question, so I apologize for not having that off the top of my head. But I would say that that's to make sure each phase stands on its own, and then can, you can have the momentum as you go through uncertain market cycles. I mean, just in the time, my almost 20 years with the company, I've seen a global recession and a global pandemic, and we're still here standing and hoping to still bring you a great project. So I think, do you have any additional questions on that? I want to make sure I properly work through your questions.
Yes, sorry, to be respectful of your time, we'll take questions at the end.
Okay, absolutely, okay. Then it was Commissioner Benninger. Good question. So the easy, quick question, or a quick answer to you along the facade is that is not all one parking structure. There will be a significant amount of residential frontage onto that street, which will be part of the architectural design within that project. So it will have a heart and feel to it. As a matter of fact, in some of the other renderings and PowerPoints that we've had, we're opening up that it'll be a large pedestrian walkway with large planners to make people feel safe about the fact that there is the road there and the, and the center island. So we look to energize that road with landscaping. I think at the study session, we brought up Mark from Rios, which at some point here, we can do that again, if you'd like to ask questions. But we, there will not be a throwaway side to this project. It will be Sagerstrom quality on both sides of the street regardless. It will not just be a parking structure facing across the street at Bear. And we've seen, even with some of our other projects, we've landscaped them and put even design fronts on them to make sure that they were part of the larger development. The second question that you had, which was echoed by some of the other commissioners as well, that has to do with the crosswalk. So it's a good, it's a good answer. They're both in Phase One. So you won't have to wait to Phase Two, Phase Three, Phase Four to see this. Both crosswalks and lights are planned to be in Phase One. So Commissioner Oliva, you had talked about parking. And the other thing that I had brought up on this is one of my very first development projects, not quite as large as this, was Agilon in Costa Mesa on Harbor Boulevard. And we, there was a single-family detached home community that actually the family had built some years ago. They had significant concerns about the converted retail over to residential in parking on their streets. To this day, and that project has been built and constructed and successful for well over a decade, not a single complaint about any of our residents parking in that neighborhood. So it's, you know, commitments made, and, and we feel that this will be properly parked, Commissioner Oliva. Commissioner Leo, you had brought up the facade. I think I had addressed that before. We'll continue to make sure that it is quality and, and the facade meets. Commissioner Eskamia, you talked about the retail. And the retail, as it was described here today, was part of a good feedback back and forth with city staff. City staff had requested that percentage be in Phase One, and we brought good data on our knowledge. We're known to have a good eye towards successful retail, but I think we met an important middle ground that met the city's need to get revenue early in the project, that we think that we can meet in Phase One. But it wasn't, it was not an initial agreement on, on how that would be constructed. And your city staff did a very good job with the ad hoc and pushing back on us and different issues, and where we thought we could acquiesce, where we thought we could make it work, because we understand, we, this project, as you pointed out in the financial analysis, outside of the fees and public benefits, will drive a great deal of revenue into the city that is not coming today, and that will be part of it. And we understood that was important to the city, so we wanted to, to make that commitment early on. Commissioner Ramos, you brought up the crosswalk, public safety, so we believe we can deliver both crosswalks in Phase One. I don't have, I think, you had talked about labor. We have 35% with two of the unions, with carpenters and layuna on this project. That concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. And I'm gonna take questions from the commission, see if you can please remain up there. I'll begin with Commissioner Wu.
I asked you a question about land acknowledgement to, for the First Nations. Would it be like the Noguchi Garden, I'm not asking for some as big as that, but would there be space in the little walkways or something, where you can acknowledge the two tribes?
Not doing the architecture or landscape design on that, I can't really speak for though, but I think the family's history of designating the importance of the land, even before the family, will be something in the project. In each phase, Commissioner Wu will come back to the city. If in fact, there is an opportunity to do something special like that in one of the phases, the commission will have an opportunity to address that.
And I'll tell you why that's important, as, as they see more and more land dedicated to development, they see their history and their culture and their ancestors, you know, less there, you know, being erased. And I think it's kind of important acknowledgement, just acknowledge somewhere, a little plaque on a bench, something just so that we can say, yeah, we know you were here.
I appreciate that, absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Pham.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair, for the presentation. The conceptual renderings that were placed here in the specific plans, the massing of these buildings, I know that they're just placeholders for the intent of the design, but based on what we see in front of us here, is this the full buildout that you would plan in terms of height, in terms of, because it seems different from what that 3D mockup of how your project relates to the related Bristol project.
You mean the pencil drawings versus the pictures, the images?
Because it seems like the scale of these buildings are a lot smaller than the three towers.
So if I, if I am correct, I believe the three towers, at least as was submitted, are 233 feet, 247 feet, 255 feet, and 263 feet. So the, there will be height within these projects. And you were commenting and complimenting- And you were commenting and complimenting some of the pictures that were in the plan. I would say those were not pictures of Park Center, Plaza Tower, the Performing Arts and others. I think you will be very pleased with the family's attention to make a statement with a number of these buildings. The family does not want to build, and I know with your background, you have a keen eye for this. The family wants this development to be timeless. And to be something that Santa Ana doesn't say, well, that looks like it was built in 1973. You know, Plaza Tower today is still the building when you're driving down the road and it tells you you're home or you're back in this area of Santa Ana and Costa Mesa. And I believe you'll see that same type of attention to architectural detail, especially on the large buildings, but throughout it. And as I had mentioned before, especially on some of the parking concerns, if you look at what the family did with the Santa Barbara type development on Agilon on Harbor Boulevard, an incredible amount of family input and detail in making sure that these are statement buildings.
And on the other side of Sunflower, that's adjacent to Main Place, sorry, not Main Place, South Coast Plaza.
Okay.
Are there planned improvements in terms of landscape on that side so that it matches your development?
So are you speaking on the Costa Mesa side of Sunflower? There are not current plans for that. It's an excellent question, actually, because it reminds, it reminds me of when we were asked by the city of Costa Mesa about the adjacent retail to Agilon and whether or not we would be bringing that up. And that might be a good question. I'm going to answer your question, but you know, you need to trust the messages that are here. And when the city of Costa Mesa, when we built Agilon, they were concerned about how it would match to the adjacent retail, which we owned as well. And we promised them that once we got Agilon, it needed to be a standalone project, that we would invest in the upgrades on the other side, which we did to the great, you know, joy and contentment of the city of Costa Mesa. But yes, we do plan on always enhancing. And actually, it's even with my time period here where there was a complete renovation, I think of the frontage of Nordstrom, within my almost 20 years here with the company. Costa Mesa and Santa Ana share an agreement. And I don't want to get over my skis on your transportation experts that are here. But they do tend to share an agreement on Sunflower, at least between Bear and Bristol, for some sort of shared, so one side doesn't fall apart versus the other. If we were to look at it today, I do believe the Santa Ana side is in more of a deteriorated state than the Costa Mesa side is. We understood that and we had talked with the city of Costa Mesa and the city of Santa Ana about addressing that. But this was prior to the city kicking off its general plan. So I think Chair Ramos brought up an excellent point, which is it didn't really make sense to go and fix the roads at that time with construction traffic that would be coming through. It made sense to do that after the project is done. And I do think we plan on investing in those medians on Sunflower. We have easements on those medians to make sure that they can be properly landscaped and maintained in that project, in that interface between Sunflower, Santa Ana side and Costa Mesa side.
Because I think there would be some consistency that would be great on both poles of the street.
Our hope, Commissioner Fam, is that you will view as a leader within Santa Ana, that you will all say, this looks like a continuous campus between these two cities. As we get into the different phasing and years down the road, continue to look at ways to integrate. And I think it was a comment before by a number of commissioners. We've had a great relationship with Related through this project and we will continue to talk with them to make sure there's proper interface between the family and Related, Bristol, I'm sorry, Sunflower and the Plaza side.
And then one last comment. I think Commissioner Leo reminded me, which makes sense, that on phase one, most of the green space of the project is being delivered in phase one, which I think is the benefit of having that actually phase one. My only point, I'm bringing up the discrepancy in my eyes of the phasing is that it seems like the only thing that's connecting phase two and phase one, that the two greens, the majority of the two green space would be a pedestrian sidewalk that kind of borders phase five. And this is to your discretion, whether or not you want to develop the landscaping a little bit more.
Okay.
So that it seems like it'll be more pedestrian friendly. Because my imagination would be phase one will be complete, well-done retail on ground floor. And then as I'm looking up towards the northern portion of your project, all I would see is construction fencing of phase five. And then a small sidewalk that, you know, leads to phase two. That's my only, what I would imagine.
I think it is an excellent comment. And I'll just go back, which I hope we, the family has built up enough trust that in this creation of place, and I'm not pretending, I'm not an architect. I don't play one on television and I didn't say I had a red roof in last night. But I would say, in this concept of place, knowing how the family feels about that, is that these types of comments where I'm not as trained as you are, but we have our landscape team here with Rios and our in-house folks with Bryce and Genzler, is that we want to make sure, to the full extent and ability, that each phase makes those residents, those members of the broader Santa Ana community that are going to come there for concerts, for movies, for farmers markets, all feel that this is the place you want to be at, at that time. Not, well, this would be great, but maybe eight years down the road. And that will be the focus and intent of the family.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fam. Vice Chair Benninger.
Thank you. And thank you for what the family has done as far as reaching out. It was truly amazing that all the neighborhood association had to do was just ask and you guys were there. So I very much appreciate that outreach. Also appreciate you rethinking Bear Street and let us know that you're going to be designing on it. I was just noticing Appendix X, Appendix F on alcohol sales. You're planning to stop at midnight. I may suggest to move that to 2:00 AM. Whether you stop at midnight or not, at least then you don't have to come back and see us in the future. So I would recommend that on it.
Well, thank you.
And then also, just as a side, who's going to put the shovel in the dirt first? You or Related?
Well, definitely, well, I mean, I would never be as presumptuous, although I don't have a vote here yet from this commission. But if you like to expedite that, I'm open to that, so.
Also, one request for the future. When you do, and I know the family's been talking what to do with South Coast Plaza and that whole area. When you guys do, could, I ask you to invite the commissioners who sits on this commission at that time through your views, so I can see how it comes together.
Absolutely.
And I will comment too, your family's done an excellent job building this area. Everything's been first-class pride. I expect this project to be nothing else but that also.
You know, it's exciting, Commissioner Benninger. Even sitting in here during the study session, I had a tap on my shoulder from a member of the public that was here and was unaware that our project was on that night. She was here on a different issue. And she had graduated with one of our managing partners in the family, Sally Sagstrom. So four members of the current family, as you well know, are Santa Ana High School grads, actively involved in the community and the family, in the community today, and feel a great connection to the city of Santa Ana. And, you know, they're involved in every year when there's no project going on. And I think having the commission come back to celebrate the success of the project, sounds great to me.
And I'll just, I know I expressed this to you also. I think one great attraction, whether it be at this project or it's whatever you do at the South Coast Plaza or even the hotel you're planning to build, an observation deck would be just, to me, would really help bring folks in this area. So just to see this.
Sounds very exciting to me, absolutely.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benninger. I'll ask my, just one question, but first, thank you so much. I'm really happy to hear how extensive the community engagement has been. And I know Commissioner Benninger lives on that side of town. So happy to hear that you were, you and everyone working on this development were very accessible to the community. To me, that's always a good sign. You're not afraid to show up. You're not afraid to answer any hard questions. And you're not afraid to try to find a way to make it work for everyone. So thank you. I also want to thank you for the commitment to including a skilled and trained workforce in this project. I'm happy to hear that you're at 35% of that workforce is coming from two unions, so the carpenters and layuna. And I just wanted to ask if you might be increasing that percentage to include more skilled and trained workforce and additional construction or building trades or any other union?
I'd say it's too early to say right now, but there's definitely, I would not say that the answer to that is no. But we're very excited about the partnership. This commission, I think, actually this commission, I've thanked you before for the support on South Coast Technology Center, a great job creator within here. And we had partnered with Labor on that as well. So we feel that that is critical, not just on a smaller project, but a project of this size. And as you know, Chair Ramos, we just need to make sure that the project can bring the quality that's demanded by this commission and demanded by the residents of the city of Santa Ana. So there's never a no, but we just need to make sure that it's the right skilled trades at given times. And I do know that many of those trades are, broader trades are covered within that 35%, so.
Thank you. I appreciate the transparency and any way that you can increase that percentage, I encourage you to.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll move on to Commissioner Oliva.
I just want to thank you for answering the questions that we previously had during the questions to staff. Being able to just get the clarity and get that transparency has been, has been really, really great. I have no additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliva. Commissioner Leo?
Justin, first of all, thank the family for their investment in the city. And I wanted you to talk about, because I think a lot of people don't know the breadth of what the city, what the family owns just beyond South Coast Plaza and the other piece, and your commitment to Santa Ana and why the family's so invested in Santa Ana. Not the technology part, but all the other stuff that you own that is actually in Santa Ana. The family owns other properties. Why don't you describe what South Coast, because basically it's the Callan family and the Sagstrom family at that end of town. Could you talk about the other properties so people realize like, when you put, when you, when the men and women here put the shovel in the ground, they're, they're, they're a part of a big, long train of developments in the south end of town.
Sure, yeah. There's, again, it would be hard for me to touch on all of them, but it was an interesting project. Ali, who I commend for not only being a great professional, but putting up with multiple phone calls from me over time. We had a coffee shop. I think it was a Walgreens converted into a Seven Tea Leaves, Seven Leaves, sorry. I drink more coffee. But the detail into that one building, which I think was a Walgreens conversion to Seven Leaves. It just shows the family, it doesn't matter the size of the building or the size of the development. Again, I want to be respectful of everyone's time in this room. I know there are public speakers. But the family developed much of the downtown of Santa Ana. At one time had developed the predecessor to the Main Place development today. So the family's history within even the central corridor within Santa Ana goes back decades, decades and decades. So Santa Ana is near and dear to the family's heart. And it goes far beyond just South Coast Plaza Village.
And Genius Live in Santa Ana.
Yeah, and Flora Park.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioner Eskamia?
Yeah, no, thank you for the presentation, all the work that you've done so far to get here. I was wondering on one, like I guess actual item, and it was to the question that Commissioner Benninger brought up around the maybe like having some sort of use along either Bear or some additional kind of facade. So just trying to limit the number of kind of quote unquote blank walls. I know they won't be blanked, they're going to have landscaping, they're going to have other options. But I did think that you did, you as the company, the Sagstrom company, did a wonderful job on Park Tower where there is this very unique, very small linear little line of commercial. And I'm wondering what we might be able to do to sneak something like that in, whether it's a notch or anything that really doesn't. It's not like a deep footprint, it's very small, but it's really nice and very unique. And I just, I'm looking for options here.
So it's just one of those moments where that had gone through my head. Should I, should I bring that up in the discussion? And then I thought, you know, perhaps not, because it's not part of the current plan today. But that's where I give great kudos to you because you do your homework and you're aware of that. So yes, but as we talked about with, in the study session, is there are going to be elements to this development. It perhaps is within the five phases, it's perhaps afterwards. Because the frontage of those parking structures along Anton Boulevard, and I think the other part, which is parking structure fronts Plaza Tower, does add a great element and can energize that area. The difference is, is that that area was already built and had matured. And that was a decision that the family made. It's not prime retail to connect to the back of it. But it shows, Commissioner Eskamia, the family never stops looking at how do you continue to invest, upgrade and attract good tenants and people to that area. So to say that that could happen at a later date, you've already shown it's something that the family has done. But the difference, again, to go back to it, is this density of retail that has to happen. And again, talking with Jerry and Ali and Min and the ad hoc where they had pressed us to do more retail at the beginning, we need that sense of place. We need that density and excitement in that area. And once that's successful and we build that out, you could see those types of uses perhaps happen sometime down the road. But it would happen organically like it happened at Park Tower, which is Park Tower and Plaza Tower. And that's a, you know, that's, you know, a very good example of a continued investment down the road.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And yeah, I definitely think that Bear side will probably be the hardest and last with that natural organic growth and maybe more along the.
Those initial shops, Commissioner, they're going to want that density. They're going to want to be next to each other to bring in other people. So down the road, as we see perhaps the family's vision of this being a pedestrian type campus, that that will be a future in a plan along Bear Street.
Okay, all right. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eskamia. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and start with public comments. If commissioners have additional questions, we can ask them at the end. Recording Secretary, have we received any written communication? Or is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Chair, we have received a total of 17 emails in the form of public comments for this item before the 3:30 PM deadline, which has been distributed to the commission and posted online. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon to indicate that you would like to speak. If you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial nine and then six to unmute yourself. I will wait a few seconds. Chair, we have four speakers in person and one through Zoom.
Thank you. We'll begin with in person. First, I apologize if I misread your name. I believe we have Gary. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Sparks, okay. And you'll have three minutes.
Okay, I am Gary Sparks and I'm from Village Creek, which is directly across the street from the project. And at the very first Sunshine Meeting, it was believed that we were like the other projects that were all gated and we're not. So my major concern is protecting our parking in our community because our parking is already poached by outsiders as it is. And also Wacom Street is already very impacted with residents from either side of the street. That includes South Coast Springs and South Coast Shores and Village Creek. And very often, there's no parking available for people there. And some of our residents are forced to park there. We have in our CCNRs that every resident, there's 133 units in our community. Every place has a two-car garage. And nobody can get a permit to park in our permit spots. And they also cannot use our guest parking unless they have three cars. And there are a number of us who do. And there are a number of us who do. And so, and if they are using their garage for storage units, like is very common in Southern California, they can be fined, and they have to have two parkable spaces inside their garage. So one of the things I would like to suggest to you, and I'm going to suggest this to Costa Mesa as well, is that on our side of Bear Street, that there would be parking permits that would be issued to the residents on our side of Bear Street, down Wacom on either side. And that would be those three, the three projects or three communities, South Coast Springs, South Coast Shores, and Village Creek. And we could also have little tear-off tabs that each resident could give to their guests if they need to park on the street as well. Something like that. But that's my major concern. Also, the traffic on Bear Street is, gets pretty thick, especially at the evening time, rush hour traffic. And so I'm hoping that the streetlights that you're proposing are going to be synchronized, because that would just make a bad situation worse. That's it. Those are my comments for now. Oh, by the way, the appendices when the Santa Ana specific project was, or plan was being put online for view, the appendices that had the parking study and management plan as well as the traffic study, those were not available. So if we can get those appendices, so we can study them, I'd really appreciate that. It was all taken offline before we could see them, so thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Antonio Velazquez?
My name is Antonio Velazquez. I'm representing the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. We are proud to support the village-specific plan. Carpenter's Union has a memorandum of understanding in place with the developer, assuring that this project will create significant job opportunities for Santa Ana skilled tradespeople. The development is more than just new construction. It represents substantial community benefits. The project has undergone a thorough and transparent process with meaningful collaboration alongside neighbors, community leaders, city staff, and city officials, and labor. We believe this project will strengthen Santa Ana's economy, support local workers, and contribute to a vibrant, thriving community. We respectfully urge your approval of the village-specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Sorry, Antonio. I was looking at another speaker card. Next up, we have Ralph Velador.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff. My name is Ralph Velador, and I'm a United States Army veteran, and I'm here in behalf of Launa, Southern California District Council of Laborers, Launa Local 652, the members that are here tonight, but most importantly, our members who couldn't be here. Our members depend on decisions like this one night so we can go to work. We all know the economy takes developers that are willing to infuse private money into our economy to make it robust. We must support developers who use union contractors that hire well-trained union tradesmen who are professional in their craft, and build to the highest standards with the dignified wage and benefit plan. Launa members depend on these jobs to support our families and to attain the American dream. And to close, when I came home from serving our country, my skills didn't necessarily translate to civilian life, but the opportunities were afforded to me by my union and developers like this one, tonight, that build project and give us the opportunity to work and retire with the dignified pension plan. These jobs are important to a lot of us in the community, and because of developers like this, it helps us help our community become strong, build the infrastructure, and like I said, attain the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. Next up, we have Juan Munoz.
Good evening, Honorable Chair Ramos and Commissioners. My name is Juan Munoz, and I am a political coordinator with Unite Here Local 11, the Hospitality Workers Union, representing 32,000 members across Southern California and Arizona, including over 700 that call Santa Ana home. Local 11 opposes by right hotel development and consistently advocates for cities to retain their discretion over such developments. Hotels are particularly intense land use with unique impacts, including impacts on local demand for housing, transportation, and other public services. Also, unlike community-serving retail like a cafe or grocery store, hotels don't make the project more livable for the residents of the housing, and are more likely to be incompatible rather than complementary to the residential uses. In addition to the housing, the proposed village Santa Ana specific plan contemplates allowing up to 80,000 square feet of commercial uses, together with up to 300,000 square feet of office space. While hotel is not explicitly proposed now, the plan proposes to permit hotels, including extended stays, as a by-right use, along with many other types of uses under the commercial-retail-office umbrella of the allowed uses table in the plan. Hotels are presently disallowed at this site, and without this plan would otherwise continue to not be allowed without a discretionary decision by this commission and the council. We object to permitting this specific use by right and respectfully ask that this planning commission reconsider this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Recording Secretary, can we move to the online public speakers?
Richard Knight, may you please unmute yourself?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, yeah, cool. Yeah. Hi, Santa Ana City Council. Yeah, thank you for having me and letting me speak. I apologize ahead of time if I'm not eloquent or well-spoken. I'm just an everyday guy who lives in Aspen Village in Santa Ana near the proposed project site, and I work my engineering job at Costa Mesa. I'm here because I'd like to make a comment about the sponsor of this project, South Coast Plaza. While I support bike-friendly infrastructure as well as more housing, and I was pleased to hear that bike lanes are included in the proposal, I'm skeptical of South Coast Plaza and concerned with how they treat everyday people like me who bike, based on my experience in their mall. I was biking to the mall to shop for new glasses, and in the parking lot, in like the maze of a parking lot, I couldn't find any bike parking, so I chained my bike to a railing that was really far out of the way. There was like no, there was like no one nearby, and like you had to go really out of your way to like trip over my bike. It's like all I was saying, it was like really out of the way. And I've been biking for over 15 years, including when I moved to Santa Ana almost two years ago. And like, up until that point, I had no issues with people, with business owners removing my bike for obstruction, but in this, including like the nearby establishments, like the one in South Coast, like the shops along the South Coast Metro. But in this situation, I came back to see the mall staff cutting and destroying my bike lock. And then, like, when I asked, like, where am I supposed to park my bike? I don't know. I didn't see any signs. They told me, like, oh, there was just like, there's like a sign posted in the front, like, there's like small sign posted in the front that you could have called the phone number on and asked where they, where you could park your bike. And I was like, what about all the other signs? There's like no sign here that says like you can't park here, and like, how was I supposed to know that I couldn't park here? But anyways, yeah, all I wanted to do was shop for glasses. I didn't realize they would like spiral onto this huge, like, this huge inconvenience. I bought my bike off Facebook Marketplace because it was cheaper, and maybe because it looked bad, they want to get it up their property because it looked bad. But anyway, anyways, going beyond this, if a mall treats, if a mall that like seeks like patronage treats the customers this way, I wonder how they'll treat, I wonder like how they'll treat their tenants. Just these arbitrary hurdles and these arbitrary hurdles that they threw at me, just, and people like me who choose to bike just suggests to me that South Coast Plaza seeks to gentrify the space against everyday people who rent and enjoy biking. Yeah, while I realize this will actually come up as my testimony, how just like the sponsors of this proposal, South Coast Plaza, to hear my perspective and consider the accessibility of bikers and bikers like me over having a really grand gilded plaza with, that looks nice, but it has authoritative and archaic rules and restrictions that like, all of a sudden you could have your bike lock cut for some rule that you didn't know about. While South Coast Plaza can enforce these rules, like, it pushes everyday people like me to like drive now, cause more traffic for everyone else. Yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Was that all our online speakers?
We have one more. Doug, will you please unmute yourself?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Doug Mangione. I'm with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers here in Orange County. We were chartered in Santa Ana in 1928. Our apprenticeship has been training young men and women here in Santa Ana for almost 60 years. I'd like to say the developer has reached out to our brothers and sisters in the basic trades, carpenters, laborers, operators, but they're leaving out the mechanical crafts, the electricians, the plumbers, the sheet metal workers, air conditioning people, painters. I would like to ask that the city, a recommendation, go to the city to have the developer reach out to the LA Orange County building trades to try and make, give an opportunity for all skilled and trained workers, including the MEP trades, the electricians, the plumbers, and the sheet metal, an opportunity to work on this project. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Doug. Chair, those are the only speakers we have.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make any concluding remarks? Your time is amended to five minutes.
I just wanted to thank the commission again. I think a robust process of outreach hearings is critical to bringing forward a quality project like this, and I want to thank you for your consideration of this project, and we're excited to be a partner with the City of Santa Ana again on a new venture, and we hope to have your support. So thank you so much, Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. With that, the public hearing is now closed. So now would be the time to take a motion or second, but we can also go into discussion first.
Well, I was actually.
I'd like to make motion.
Oh.
You want to go to discussion?
Yeah, I guess I just had a question on the hotel permits.
Yeah, so we can do the discussion. I also wanted to bring that up. Go ahead, Commissioner Escamilla.
Yeah, so just, I guess, on staff on that one, it just, it did seem standard that we typically do CUPs for hotels, I think, in every other commercial zone and most of our transit code as well. I wasn't able to pull up everything, but is there anywhere else in the city where hotels are permitted by right? Or would this be an outlier there?
Yes, Commissioner, in Santa Ana, in addition to what is proposed this evening, the MacArthur Place specific development, that's SD number 43, Maine and MacArthur, allows hotels by right. And I believe, as you were alluding to, the transit zoning code actually does allow hotels by right in all of the subzones where they're allowed. So there is precedence for allowing them administratively.
Sorry, I'm just.
I can ask a question of staff, and then you want to jump in after that, Commissioner Escamilla?
But it has to go through a review process, right? Which comes to us.
They would be subject to a development review at the staff level, but because they're permitted administratively, they wouldn't need to come to the commission unless a certain variance or something were being triggered, but the use itself would be administratively permissible.
So I have, so my question is, as of now, as I've understood, the project doesn't include hotels. So if we remove the by-right allowance so that any future potential hotels would have to come before us, that doesn't impact this project tonight, correct?
The commission does have the ability to approach this in several ways. One would be that in your recommendation to the city council, you, for example, say, "We approve, but with the following modifications to the specific plan." And of course, as good practice, it's advisable that the applicant have a say in either agreeing or disagreeing to those. And then the other approach is, well, obviously, if that is such a critical factor to the decision-making, that could also be a negative vote for the project. But those are a handful of ways of approaching the situation, either making a change from the dais, if the applicant accepts tonight. If the applicant does not accept that change, you still have the ability to recommend approval, and then communicate with the city council members that appointed you about your values about the project in general. So there's a handful of ways of approaching this.
Thank you. Commissioner Escamilla?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to ask the question to the developer, if that's an okay amendment. It would basically be adding a CUP language rather than the P language. Again, I don't know if staff has a strong opinion on this or not, or, so I'm just looking for any additional guidance from staff and from the developer.
If it helps the decision-making process, you know, every use that's proposed by this specific plan has been evaluated for its impact, right? So the specific plan would not say, for example, that residential is allowed without residential being evaluated by the environmental impact report. So similar concept here. Secondly, you know, one could argue that with the standards in place and the city's economic development goals of the general plan, that streamlining development for revenue-generating uses like hotels is consistent with the general plan. And so the ability to build them by right is supportive of the general plan. So, you know, and given the precedence that I mentioned earlier with the transit zoning code, SD 43, and any other areas where hotels are already allowed administratively, this would not be breaking new ground policy-wise either.
There is a hotel project north of the project, right?
To the east of the project is the related industrial project, which includes a, yes, a hotel project of over 200 rooms.
So Commissioner Escamilla, would you like the question to be asked to the applicant? And then for process, would that require that I reopen the public hearing?
Yes, so, thank you, and you may, as our legal assistant will say in a second, but what we typically would recommend is also if there are additional questions for the applicant, consider saving them for once so that you don't have to open and reopen the public hearing.
Thank you. So as of now, we have one question that we'll be asking the applicant. Are there any other questions, Commissioners, Secretaries?
Yeah, and I guess it'd be the same question to the applicant on the suggestion from Mr. Mangione from IBW to just meet. I think there was no requirement of commitment, but just a requirement to meet before the next meeting. And that would be my second question.
Thank you.
I think the applicant did say that they would consider, in answer to our chair's question, would entertain other trades.
Yeah, we can ask a more specific question. We want to name specific unions, but are there any other questions that anyone would like to put on the table for the applicant?
If we oppose, if we oppose reopening the public hearing, do we need to take a vote on that?
Yes, the bylaws require that to reopen the public hearing. There just needs to be a simple vote of the commission. You don't need to make a motion in a second, you just have to take a vote.
And let me say the grounds for it. I think it's ridiculous that at this late phase, Unite Here shows up one time, when all these other working people here are here, fellow brothers and sisters of the unions, shows up and says, "Oh, I read between the lines that there may be a hotel here, so I'm opposed." And then we're going to reopen this after months have been negotiated between the developer and the city? I'm opposed, so can we take a, maybe we need to take a roll call vote? Because it's ridiculous.
Second that.
So I'm going to ask the question, if you are in, well, can we take a roll call vote on whether or not, on reopening the public hearing?
Commissioner Escamilla?
I have.
Commissioner Leo?
Opposed.
Commissioner Oliva?
Opposed.
Commissioner Pham?
No.
Commissioner Wu?
Opposed.
Vice Chair Benninger?
Opposed.
Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Motion fails.
I'd like to move a motion to approve the project. We're done.
I'd like to second that.
I'd like to put forth a sub-motion to remove the by-right allowance of hotels from the specific plan. That would need a second to be considered.
Can I just say that the hotel isn't being proposed outright as like, they're going to build it? So I don't think we need to put any sort of modification or make an amendment or add anything to, to what we're voting on tonight. I don't think that's necessary.
So this, the plan, so the project currently does not include a hotel as part of their proposal, and we haven't been able to ask the applicant if at any point it might, but I don't think it will, from just visual cues I'm seeing right now. So by removing the by-right allowance, it would just mean that if at any point there's interest in adding a hotel, that would have to come before the commission. interest in adding a hotel, that would have to come before the commission instead of just being approved administratively through staff review. So that's-
Chair, can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
I think, while I agree with you that because we did not open public comment again, that we do not know the developer's intent, and that the CUP would be a mechanism to make sure that if they do intend to build a hotel, that they would come in front of the planning commission. But I think what Ali stated is valid, is that the process for the applicant to bring a hotel to the planning commission is an investment in time that the byright would expedite, which would, you know, be in, which would be in line with what, as a city, we want to kind of stimulate economic growth. So I just want to put that into consideration, that the CUP won't be that quick. It's, you know, so just a consideration.
Thank you. So I've put a sub-motion forth. If there's no second, that wouldn't move forward.
I'll go in second, and so really it's just converting that one little item from permitted to CUP. I'm okay with that. I do think that it actually is a decision by the city council to balance out the labor and the economic development impact. So it'd just be, my recommendation, ideally, to the city council would be, yeah, just take a look at it. I would go with the CUP, but it's really up to the council. But I second your motion.
Thank you. So as I understand, we would consider the sub-motion first. If that fails, then we go back to Commissioner Wu's original motion.
Right, and just to clarify your sub-motion, it appears that you are adding a recommendation that the city council remove the-
Remove the byright-
The byright designation-
Hotel, yeah.
For hotels.
For hotels, correct.
From the specific plan.
Yes, just from the specific plan.
So you'll be changing item number two, not simply to adopt, but to recommend that the council adopt, but with that change? Just to clarify-
Correct.
Okay.
Secretary, can we please take a roll call vote on the sub-motion?
The sub-motion was by Chair Ramos, and it was seconded by Commissioners Camilla. We will take roll call now. Commissioners Camilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo?
No.
Commissioner Oliva?
No.
Commissioner Pham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
No.
Commission, sorry, Vice Chair Benninger?
No.
Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Motion fails.
Thank you. So with that, we go back to Commissioner Wu's original motion. Commissioner Wu, would you like to restate your motion?
I recommend that we adopt the five items for recommendation to the city council, adopt resolution number one, et cetera, and adopt an ordinance approving the amendment application establishing the village Santa Ana Pacific Plan. Three, adopt an ordinance approving the development agreement. Four, adopt a resolution approving the vesting tentative track as condition, and adopt a resolution overruing the Orange County Airport Commission's determination.
Yeah, I'd like to second with a comment, if I may, Chair.
It was, sorry, seconded by, I think-
Oh, there was already a second.
By Vice Chair Benninger.
Oh, but I'm sorry.
But point of order, when voting, are we able to make a comment?
Yes, so long as it's, you know, limited technically, when you make your motion your second, then you're supposed to vote. But we are a little bit more flexible, and we can be a little bit informal.
Thank you. So perhaps you can make your comment then, when casting the vote.
When casting the vote, fine.
Thank you. Secretary, can we please take roll call vote on Commissioner Wu's motion that was seconded by Vice Chair Benninger?
Per clarification purposes, Commissioner Wu, motion to recommend approval from city council, to city council. Commissioners Camilla?
Just to start off before the vote and the comment, I think it's just, we're trying to arrive at a particular outcome of just additional input from different labor orgs. And there's different ways to do that, so I think that, you know, maybe the hotel question is still something that the city council should address more holistically, so it's not just on a one-off project as far as basic labor standards or any hotel development. So I don't think that a yes vote is against that. I think it's just, you know, was in support of it. And then that the intent to continue to communicate was already indicated by the applicant, but, you know, so we just don't get that additional affirmation that conversations will continue. And with that, I do vote aye for the project to be recommended.
Commissioner Leo?
Aye.
Commissioner Oliva?
Aye.
Commissioner Pham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benninger?
Aye.
Chair Ramos?
Aye, with the comment that I hope that the city council will take a look at the byright hotel provision as they consider the item, and then also just happy to hear that the applicant expressed interest in speaking to other unions as well, without making a commitment at this time, but hopefully that leads somewhere else.
Chair, thank you. And for anyone in the audience, for the commission that's interested in staff summary of the planning commission's deliberations in the city council staff report, this will be noted along with other topics that were discussed this evening.
Thank you.
Motion approved by unanimous approval.
Thank you. Congratulations to the applicant. So that concludes the business calendar. We're gonna be moving on to staff comments.
None at this time. You may want to call like a two-minute recess.
We're gonna call a two-minute recess.
We can start.
Great. So now, with our short recess being over, we're gonna go back to staff comments.
Two quick updates. Firstly, earlier, when I referred to Melissa Crossway as legal assistant, she is our senior assistant city attorney. She is very talented. I meant to say senior legal assistance, but my lisp got in the way. And the second thing is that as we advance into the fall, we will be, we will be preparing for the comprehensive zoning code update that will be returning to the planning commission and city council through the months of September and October and November. We will also be doing round three of engagement workshops with the public. So I encourage anyone who's interested in, again, remaining a part or even joining later in the conversation, that they still have that opportunity to do so. So that's it for me this evening.
Man, with Chair, can I ask a question?
We'll wait for the Commissioner comments. Does anyone else on staff have any comments?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Just a quick comment. Our current acting director of Public Works is Rudy Rosas, and our current acting city engineer is Caesar Barrera. Okay, so I wanted to just share that, thought you should know. With that, thank you for all your thoughtful comments.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to commission comments. Does the commission, I'll just scroll down. Any closing comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Wu?
Does regulation of noise fall under your jurisdiction, or is that Public Works?
The city does have a noise ordinance, and the police department is often called to respond to any noise complaints. Is there more detail that we can elaborate on?
I just noticed nowadays, people have been taking their mufflers off or something and intentionally making, and people on the electric bikes take off their muffler and you're trying to get some sleep because you work all night, you know? So I was just, and the police can't be everywhere, and I'm not asking for more police. We're over police, it's just a matter of like, how do you promote that? And the second thing, and I was hoping, under the economic, can we have a, a cheap, easy, less expensive way of promoting by locally? You know, it could be just a social media campaign on the city site or something like that, you know? Just to support our small businesses here in the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Commissioner Pham?
In general, thanks, Jerry, for the presentation. That's very, it's very good. And I echo Commissioner Wu, those mufflers are crazy. So, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pham. Vice Chair Benninger?
I want to thank Jerry, it was really a very well-prepresentation, thank you for the time and effort. My own comments, that's the only thing that made my first car, a Corvair, sound mean was to take the muffler off, so I kind of go along with it, with that group per se. But, but again, I want to, I really appreciate this commission. I think we had a very good discussion. I thought the questions we asked were very fair. And so I really just want to thank everybody. I thought it was a very, very good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Benninger. Commissioner Oliva?
Thank you, staff, for the presentation. Again, y'all, the clarity y'all provide is, is, it answers questions ahead of time. And then for, for my fellow commissioners, y'all ask really great questions, and then it just, I just don't have to ask anything, so thank you. Comment on my end, the construction on the streets, not to complain, but oh my gosh, I was like in gridlocked traffic the other day, and I was like, and then there was like a power outage. So it's like going into one lane, and then there's no power, and I was like going to a doctor's appointment, and I'm not even gonna get there. I should probably just call them and let them know I'm not gonna get there. I know that we have a schedule for like the streets that are gonna get repaired, but it just feels like every single street's under repair. So if we can reimagine the schedule, that would be, that would be great for next time we do street repairs. That would be ideal. But that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliva. Commissioner Leo?
Given today's economics, when you guys get articles about trends in retail, could you share that with us so that we can think about how, when we get these projects, what retail's gonna look like? Because that's the lifeblood of the city. If we don't generate sales tax, and it's, a lot of it's done by us, because we set off, whether it's the strip mall, what type of parking it is. If we can assist in that process, and I just, given today's marketplace where Amazon basically wipes out a lot of small retail, how we can make it better for our folks would be helpful from our standpoint. The second question, the second comment is that Los Angeles City passed a $30 an hour ordinance for hotel and airport workers. The hotels around Disneyland will benefit. They're union hotels, but they're gonna benefit because the wages aren't as high, and people are gonna move their business to Orange County. That's a given. The World Cup is gonna see benefits from that as well, and we will benefit from that. And we have hotels here. So the question becomes is, when does the wage get too high to move the business? And you know where, how money works. So keep an eye on our hotels, the sporting events that are coming, and whether or not they stay around SoFi and elsewhere, or they come this way. What?
Oh, boy.
They're asking for volunteers for the World Cup, so you could do that too, Alan. The other thing I wanted to ask is Grand and Seventeenth, probably the last big piece of property that's underutilized, that can be developed. Ali, do you have a status on what it is? It's owned by a REIT, if I understand correctly? Where are we? I know there's lots of people that are interested in it, but where are we as a city? And what are you guys thinking about so that if we run across people in the community, at least we have a general answer? Because it's just empty.
So the property at Seventeenth and Grand is designated by the general plan as one of the focus areas for new mixed-use development. So policy-wise, I use, I call it like the policy infrastructure is there to allow redevelopment. There is a, there are a handful of owners between the Medical Arts Plaza, this property that you're referring to, and then some of the corner pad buildings that the Economic Development Division, under Director Garcia's team in community development, is actively marketing to developers that do mixed-use, commercial, and housing developments. So the general plan designations for that site are a little less intense. What we see at South Coast area is 125 units per acre. That's probably the most density anywhere in the city, whereas these properties are ranging much less, usually half the density of that. So it would be more suited towards what you'd see in sort of like three, four, five-story townhomes, stacked apartments, smaller scale mixed-use. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. Commissioners, come in.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think it went remarkably smoothly for being such a large project, but I guess now everything after related is a little tinier. But definitely appreciate the feedback, everyone that came out to comment, and just how it all, you know, came together. So looking forward to the final discussion on this over at city council. And then there was another point that I think was, that came up by one of the public commentators, I think is more of a broader conversation to be done with, with Public Works, and that's the opportunities for adding surface parking on kind of these major arterials, primary arterials, secondary arterials, where that could be a possibility of just narrowing down the roadways, increasing safety, slowing down cars. And I know that it's technically not planning, but it is still, for me, transportation and land use go together to create walkable, livable communities, and people will probably pay us money to park their cars on the street and not have them towed and ticketed. So again, revenue generation, revenue neutral, helping maintain the streets. And I still say the easiest and simplest experimentation there is if we just allow people to park overnight in parking meters in front of apartment complexes. Oh my gosh, I want to say on Third Street in front of those apartments, because we can at least generate $2 a night per parking space, and over the course of a year, at least pay for the initiative itself. space, and over the course of a year, at least pay for the initiative itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Escamilla. Like others, also just wanna thank staff. Thank you, Jerry, for the presentation. I know it was 60 slides, and you did a great job. And then just echoing what Commissioner Escamilla said, so I believe we have the information for that, that public speaker that asked about the permanent parking. So just wondering if anyone on staff can send them a quick email and just let them know what a process looks like, so they have that information and can figure out if it may or may not work for the three communities that they mentioned.
Vice Chair, he was, he was in Costa Mesa, that's why.
Oh.
He was, he was across the street in the Costa Mesa side.
Oh, never mind.
We reviewed the city boundary, so his segments of streets that he's talking about are in the city of Costa Mesa, but we have a good working relationship with them, and we'll relay the message to our counterparts there.
Oh, it's very kind of you, Seth. Thank you. Awesome. Well, with that, the, this meeting is being adjourned, and the next regular meeting is scheduled for August 25th at 5:30 PM.